All right, everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, start with our roll call. We have Stephanie Tunick standing in for Will Frank. Thank you for being here. Clerk Tara Stickles. Councilwoman Sherry Millik. Councilwoman Cindy Voss. Councilwoman Brittany Brown. And Deputy Supervisor Ronald Feller. Ronald, okay? We've got to get you in placard, I think. And I'm here. All right, we have a very long agenda, so thank you all for your patience in advance. The first thing we're going to do is our presentations for our comprehensive plan. Our first firm that is going to present is the LeBurg Group. Come on, sit at the table. Looking forward to hearing your presentation and thank you for accessing the TVs for the public's benefit.
Thank you, Evan. And I want to thank Tara because we could find your hidden bots back there in the bottom. So if you give me why, we can turn this on.
Yeah, and just, yeah, just definitely try to use the microphone. There you go. You can take it off, Holly.
Look at that, are you pushing it a little bit? Okay, very good. Okay, can everyone hear me back?
Oh, yeah, it's good, it's consistent.
Okay, but before I sit down, I did want to thank, I know my back will be to everyone's here, but the presentation will be on all the screens and I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. My, my name is Ben Sidon. Now, I am the Vice President of LeBurg Group. We're a municipal consulting firm. We work throughout New York State and the Northeast. And with us tonight is our Planning Director Nicole Allen. And our Senior Planner Dave Gilmore. This scene is very, very loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can't hear if you don't have it on.
Oh, there you go. Maybe just keep it back.
Yeah, I'm going to keep it back. It makes me feel, well, you know when you're really sick and you get a cold and you feel a dark thater when you wake up in the morning? And that's how I felt those reverberating in my chest. So I thank you all for the opportunity to come out tonight and chat about the comprehensive plan in Town Montgomery. As I, up here is who we are, but I want to mention real quick a little bit about us. How many of you have heard about LeBurg Group before? One, two, three. Well, thank you. We have been around for about fifty-five years. And we're a municipal consulting firm. We're not just a planning firm. We're an engineering, architecture, government operations, planning, and grant writing firm. What that means is that we have an integrated staff of experts. And it allows us to work with communities such as yours to identify, implement, and project. Help you and the public come to a consensus as to what you want to be when you grow up. As a planner, that's what we really do. We bring together different issues, different groups, different stakeholders at a table through a roundtable process and a public process and figure out where we want to be in the next five, ten, and twenty years. And then back it up and develop what we call a blueprint for action. In other words, what we're trying to do is help you figure out not only what your vision is, but to provide you the tools on how to get there. The tools in land use and zoning and site plan and subdivision. The tools that allow for the balance between economic development, open space preservation, identifying what needs you have for housing for today and for the future. And help plan for that over the next twenty years. But also do something a little bit unique. See, part of the firm I mentioned real quick is grant writing. So we have secured over two-hundred-and-forty-five million dollars since two thousand for our plans. What that means is every plan that we develop, be it a comprehensive plan or strategic plan or agricultural plan or an engineering plan, goes through the eyes and filter of our grant writer team to make sure that whatever grants are out there that you may want to access to develop those projects, those buzzwords, those catchphrases, those descriptions that the state needs to see are actually built into your plan. Because you, I know if you've talked to planners before, they say, "We want our plans to implement and not have dust, not sit on a shelf, not, they come in paperweight." Ours don't because they're written that way. They're developed for the purpose to be implemented to help you succeed in achieving your goals. So that's a little bit about us and how we develop our plans. But what I want to commit to you all now is our whole firm's resources. Now, a question came to us as to why didn't we have been in the past? And resources, timing, and commitment is where that's at. We don't trophy hunt, so to speak. You know, if you have a kid playing softball or soccer, they go to certain tournaments because they think they can win. We don't go for trophies. We go to make partnerships for long-lasting relationships. So in meeting that, we found out that you had not yet selected a firm. We wanted to reach out and find you. Because when we try to find those projects that are challenging and interesting, doing a plan for planning sake does nothing for anybody. What we're trying to do is find those communities that are having a hard time striking the balance. Where you're on a commercial corridor and hub, but yet still want to safeguard your future lands for your future generations. Where you want to build those relationships with villages, identify ways to share services, lower those costs of services and enhance them while simultaneously providing those jobs for our youth, for our future, and for neighbors around us. And you have that. Because of that, we sought you out. Because of your unique situation here in the transportation hub, because you're a hub in the economy of Orange County, and because the delicate balance has brought out all these people behind you. That's why we want to work with you. It's not just an exercise. It's not just a project, it's an engagement that we believe in and we want to be with you on. Which is why we brought our Planning Director and our Senior Planner to talk more about the process, our inventorying, and how we want to engage the public and how we want to build that consensus. Throughout the night, if you have any questions, you can stop us during the presentation or hold afterward and answer questions. Thank you, and Nicole?
And Ben touched on a lot of this with the project understanding. And many of these bullets come right out of your RFP process as well. And we really just want to make sure that, you know, part of our understanding is really re-establishing or establishing a new vision for the town. And as part of that vision is also incorporating feedback with the villages, looking at your hamlet areas, and creating a sense of place that's going to be long-lasting. It's kind of recreating a commitment to your community, your commitment to yourself. So you really understand what the marching orders are going forward. And so as you, as the county officials, are going to be taking charge of what policy is going to be going in place, creating that, that plan of action, you know, the blueprint we like to call a blueprint for action.
We also understood that the community is at a point that it wants to engage its residents, engage various groups within the community, and make sure to really get a lot of voices in the plan. So we've provided for a very robust process and techniques for public engagement. At the same time, that the way that we proposed, and the proposal, of course, is flexible, that we make sure to try to keep it within a finite period of planning so that we can keep people interested and involved and aware of what's going on.
Along that line, we're flexible with our scope. Our scope that we presented was our understanding at the time that we reviewed your project and everything we're telling about what's happening here with development. It is meant to be flexible with you all as a board. So after we go through it, if we are to select a consultant, the first thing that we need to do is work with you on that scope. If there are better ways or more advantageous ways of saving money or add resources, be it add a specialist in economic development or agriculture, open space, or even work with the county, our resources they may have in GIS with filled-out analysis or inventory, we can do that. This is not a cut-and-stone scope decision. It's a be-all, end-all, you must have this or nothing. It's, it's meant to be a beginning point of our conversation. And how to best match what your needs are with what a planning scope can be in the process and timeline that you want to achieve.
So, Ben, I know we had spoken about this before when we were at the Albany newly-elected, but just so that the way the rest of the board understands and, and moving forward, since we are such a big agricultural town still, what is your plan for including that component in the plan?
As we mentioned, we have vast experience working in agricultural farm land protection, but also have a sub-concentrator man, Stoltenberg, that we worked on probably a dozen planning products together. And she is known as the rural agricultural planner in state. So she's available, we've already spoken with her, and if it is your wish to bring, I'm a robust part of that as a town board man who lives thirty-five minutes from us and we've worked together and she'll come on and keep and some part of our resources in there.
Moreover, every community obviously plans from the basis of natural resources as well as other aspects of the resource base. So in most projects that we work in, we're dealing with the prime soils, the, the aspects of the economic base, including agriculture, and how we can reinforce and sustain that aspect of the economy. So it's very typical to be working on open space protection, financial mechanisms for agricultural preservation as well as different aspects of agricultural economic development. So many communities are thinking about how to activate farm markets, how to, the state is doing so much along the lines of how to bring value-added within the agricultural sectors and Orange County's resource base obviously has a strong tradition in that regard.
Jump ahead a little bit with, um...
Maybe turn that off if you hear that one.
And Cindy, by the way, is a copy of this.
Thank you. So as part of that, we're talking about balanced strategies and balanced goals. And so through the process, we really focus on... I don't know if you guys figured it out, who knows, if it goes off. All right. Um, but we really want to focus... Maybe it's the laptop.
There you go.
We really want to focus on a sustainable plan. And it's not necessarily that everything is sustainable as far as solar and thinking of those, those big picture items. But we're talking about the balance of your community. We're talking about the balance of your, your social, your demographics, your, your housing, the balance that needs to come into place with your economics, with your agriculture, with your natural resources. So all of that comes together as part of a vibrant community. And so you can't just look at one element of your comprehensive plan. You have to look at the, the total picture. And you have to look at how it all comes together and plays into creating a sustainable Montgomery. And so that's part of that vision that has to come into play to be able to start establishing that going forward. Through our approach, we look at making sure that listening is a big part of our process. We want to be good listeners. We want to hear. It's not our plan. We don't come in here and tell you this is the way it has to be. All of our plans are custom-built. They're built with partnerships, they're built with the officials, they're built with the public, the stakeholders. It's really, it's a shared process to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be a partner in, in building what that vision is, that long-term visualization so that we can all move towards implementation together. As we build consensus, one of the key elements is that you create the buy-in. And we'll get into how those stakeholders are, are part of that process, but it's through buy-in that you can achieve more implementation because people are committed to it and want to see it through and want to see it take form and take change within the community.
I'll just add that as part of figuring out the possible strategies, it's important to think about what is the unique context within the community? What are those very special and unique features of the community that are especially ripe for bolstering and building upon?
And in doing that, we also have to look outside of the community. And we do that because you're within a region, you're within a county, and within a region that looks to you to be a leader in economic development, but that's their plan. So you have to look at how to balance the regional needs and your needs and identify those opportunities together. So when we say that it's not, that it's not our plan, it's your plan. It's your plan, and it's also in context of the region for, for when you go for grants, you're now part of the Mid Hudson region. And you're part of the county region for economic development. So you have to look at how your plan and how their vision is. If there's any, if there's any congruence between your vision and theirs, if there's a diversion of your vision in your town and what the region says, and somehow build that partnership as well. So it's partnerships within, internal, and partnerships external to help you build your vision and growth. That's the blueprint for action.
So through our approach, we do have a kickoff meeting standard with most approaches, but we work with the, the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee. We have meetings with them, but we're also going to be making sure that we come back to the county officials. They need to make sure that they understand the direction that we're being given, that there's frequent communication throughout the process. We do a variety of different community tours. We've rented buses where we've had buses provided where we can go with town, town members, community members, stakeholders that can show us through their eyes, these are key sites. These are historic sites. These are environmental sites. This is the area where we see traffic congestion. So it's through this, this different perspective that we're able to get on the ground and really start to understand from your perspective some of the challenges and some of your assets and your priorities that we want to have maintained. And that can be done in a variety of different ways, those types of tours.
We can do them for bus. We've done bicycle tours. We've done walking tours. And we've done river kayaking tours. So if you're looking at different aspects of your community, how...
The walk, they'd love to get on the kayak, right?
Correct. On that, the walk, it uses an inland waterway. So it's been designated by New York State Department of State in the executive law so you're able to apply for a local waterfront plan, which lends itself into implementation grants within the villages and the town. So you can view, we would recommend if you're going that way for waterfront planning, to view the community of the waterfront. What are those opportunities for a blue way? How are you going to grant some tourism in some, not just recreation, but it's ecotourism back into your community? If you're bringing people through, from biking, hike, interstate biking.
It's, it, the, the community tours are just a wonderful chance to get out and see the community and get the, the dialogue flowing. It's also beneficial to do things like artwork associated with the planning process, engaging students in the planning process too, since they're going to be citizens for a long time and stewards of their community.
And so you mentioned the, the Community Advisory Committee, the CPAC, we typically call them by short. And, and we'll have the regular meetings with them. We want to make sure as you're starting to do your interview process for these committee members that they're going to be charged with homework. They're not, it's not just show-up and meeting and then we get to go home. But it's going to be an interactive process. We want to make sure that they're able to read materials and they're be able to provide the feedback. And they're also going to be the eyes and ears of the community. So they're, they're people that live here that are going to be someone that you want to make sure that is approachable and be able to provide that communication from the residents. They're going to be talking to many more people and businesses. So that, that, that is part of what comes back to us. And we incorporate all of that into our planning process and into our, our future vision. And as we start talking into how do we build consensus? So we mentioned creating that public awareness and the community outreach process and plan. So while we have, we're presenting a few options on how we can do that community outreach and we can discuss them further. But once we nail down what that approach will be, there'll be a, a community outreach plan that's written so that we can share that with the public. They know exactly when the meetings are going to be. They, they know how the outreach is going to occur through local media, social media, a variety of other tools. And through that process, you're able to create the buy-in. And we can create ownership, involvement, commitment from a variety of different constituencies. Making sure that you have both the public and the private sector, the nonprofit, all of those are partners in our planning process that need to have a very active participation as we develop this over the, the next several months. And all of that together builds capacity so that you are not shouldering how to implement this by five county officials and not do it by themselves. Board members cannot just be able to be the ones that have to do it. You have to be able to charge others and be able to activate others who want to be a part of this planning process. So we mentioned stakeholder interviews, some local media outlets, and making sure that we have a diverse steering committee. Part of having that diverse steering committee is also going to be reflective in how you're able to garner a lot of different viewpoints in your, your planning process. We typically start off with a, a survey that goes out to just the, the committee members so that we're able to get some ideas of where they stand and what their viewpoints are and see and make sure that we kind of have a diverse reflection of what the community is. And then when we get into the public, we make sure that we're not all smart growth or all pro-development or all one-sided. So that we make sure that it's balanced, even within our own, our own smaller groups. Public surveys is one that we highly recommend as part of this planning process. And it can be done through an online tool. A lot of times those online tools also can be presented as paper copies as well. We can make them available at town hall and libraries and through the schools. We have the students complete the surveys as well because it is their future, their community. Working with student superintendents is a great way to get the students activated as part of the planning process. But the, the survey is going to be part of being designed by the, the committee and making sure that we get the right questions put into the process and that you get the, the right feedback through that survey and questionnaire as well.
A lot of valuable data will come forth through that that informs the dimensions of possible strategies. How to refine the options for this community? Because there's so much nuance to how you might position one option and then think about the alternatives off of that. So that's the value of the robust start to public engagement.
And stakeholder-focused groups, making sure that as we identify those stakeholder groups that we also have a very diverse network of individuals that we're speaking with. We typically do them in, in group settings. We can do them in individual interviews. We want to make sure that we talk to as many people as possible through this planning process so that you're able to understand a lot of different issues, concerns, and priorities that need to get balanced in this planning approach. We mentioned some of, some of those stakeholders that are typically included is your board members, your, your staff, but you're also talking to your developers, your, your realtors, your, your land trusts, your residents, your farmers, your business owners, your schools. That list really goes on and on as we start fine-tuning it and being able to see who has the common interests and where, where are the gaps and who we address as part of this process. As we get into the community workshops, this is where it gets, I think, more fun because you really get to be able to present some of the visualization and really get to have people from all areas of the town come out and participate and not in just those small group settings. And so one, one of those is the, is a typical visioning of kind of the assets liabilities. A lot of people call them SWOTs, strengths, weaknesses, obstacles, and threats. That's one type of meeting. There's the stakeholders, there's the future land, the land use workshop, and there's the priorities, projects, and goals workshops. So as we break those down a little bit, one of the things that came in your RFP was the town hall format. And when we hear town hall format, we hear a lot of, we talk to the people, but not necessarily people talking back to us. And so while it's part of the process, we like to have more of an inclusive planning process and be able to make sure that we're doing more listening and less talking through it. And we want to make sure that we're gathering as much as we can. So as part of what we have put in our planning processes, the preferred is the open house. And the reason why we really promote this is because we can expand the times when we are able to get to the public. A lot of our open houses have been from ten AM until seven PM or on a Saturday. Or from, they've been mobile. We've done somewhere, they've been ten to two in one location, and then from four to seven in another location. The idea is that you're able to get to seniors that maybe they don't want to drive at night. You're able to get to moms after they drop the kids off at school. You're able to get to the businesses and their lunch break. So by providing a greater opportunity for them to come to you, you're able to get a much, much larger feedback.
And you get more volume. You're getting more, as Nicole mentioned, it's, one of the planning problems in public participation is you only have a limited number of people that participate. So public participation, the purpose is to have the public participate. You know, it's kind of an odd way to say it. This gives you longer hours, more opportunities. But the mobile workshop that Nicole mentioned is unique in that we create this, this mobile kit. Not kid, kits. And you're able to move that kit throughout your community in a, in a time period that you just, that you determine. Maybe a week. And maybe that you want to put that kit in a different village hall on a different day. You may want to bring it to your library or your school or to your, your firehouse as a community event. So that's another way of bringing the public process, the process back to the public. So our goal with this is to get as much input as we can to provide you all with as much information as you can have to make the decisions you need, help guide the community forward.
And also, when we have week, week-ends or extended periods of time, poster board sessions or a more open format for an aspect of the meeting can allow us one-on-one conversations with community members. Not everybody wants to get up in front of the microphone and express their interest or ask a question. So this does give us a chance to either have subjects at stations and talk about subjects that people want to talk about, but also just to have some quick one-on-one exchange to understand aspects of the interest of the person who's participating in a public process.
And so what we've designed in our proposal was a two-day, very intense public outreach process where we're meeting with stakeholders throughout the day. We'll arrange different interviews and roundtables simultaneously, really making sure that we're hitting the, the vision with the town board, the planting boards, the village boards and the village officials, so that we're able to do all that in a, in a process where we're not having any kind of conflicts with making sure that board members are able to attend at their leisure, because a lot of jobs as well. We want to make sure that it's balanced into this process. And then day two is again, more roundtables, more stakeholder interviews. And then we, we have that open house with the public. And it's, it's a quick process so that you're able to get through and talk to a lot of people and really understand that vision in a very condensed time period.
Intense.
Very intense process. But what comes out of it is a very open process and it's very kind of eye-opening. The public can also see the results and there's no questions about how, how a material was developed leading out of that. And then the next workshops tend to be more hands-on too. We want to make sure that future land use is looking at maps and we're starting to mark it up based upon what we've heard at those, those workshops. We're able to get into some of the nitty-gritty and be able to work with the public to say, okay, we've used that this, and now let's, let's look at some opportunities and be able to work in smaller groups and, and come up with opportunities that are reflective this way. And then the same would happen with the priorities workshops. You could come up with a way to make sure that the public is able to prioritize some of the key elements that come out of that workshop. So you're, you're starting from visioning and then right into your future land use and then making sure that priorities are the key elements that come out of them.
And one more thing before we hit into the technical part of community profile. Your RFP mentioned you want to use your website for all the information. There's two ways we can do that. We can provide the information to your webmaster or we can create a website all for hours that'll link to you, which is often what we do. That way, we do all the work of populating information. There's a link, there's a page on your website that says Town Comprehensive Plan. You click it, and all of a sudden it's, it's envision Montgomery. And all the information that comes from all the meetings are available. We live in a 24/7 society. People are running around, they're two shifts, one shift for work, nighttime activities. Can't always get to the public meetings, but they want to be participating, want the most updated information. So we have that ability to create the website, provide the information as it comes ready. But enough, everyone is, I know it's transparent, if you want to use that word. You know, that word's overplayed a lot, but it's transparent. People have information at their fingertips, they can participate. And there'll be an email set up, MontgomeryPlanning@LeBurgGroup.com. So we have an email so the public and you all can send off information, share information, or even pictures of what you want to improve your plan.
When we get into the community profile, as I mentioned earlier, we're really looking at that sustainable and that vibrant community and making sure that the community profile is developed amongst the, the social and community livability. You're looking at economic vitality and your sustainable resources. So all of that collectively is what makes sustainable Montgomery. And we want to make sure that we're, we're diving in and we really have the opportunity to understand each of these elements so that you have that balance going forward. It's been mentioned that Orange County can provide some of those services as well. And so playing, you know, that opportunity can, you're happy to work with any others that you see might provide an opportunity for either better information or, or to offset someone across. One of the trade-offs that you're always going to have is if you have someone else do it, you're on their timeline and pretty information that they're going to give you. So it's just kind of a balance that you have to be able to make sure that they're going to meet your demand with a little bit of the moratorium becomes a, a time constraint within that, but they're going to be able to meet that as well. But we're flexible that way to do that. Similarly then, with establishing the vision, why we want to make sure that we hear what comes from the public. We want it so we have this word cloud that we tend to put into our planning process. And it is reflective of a lot of what we hear from the community members. And this is just kind of one visualization effort. But all of that then gets transcribed into what your vision is and how you see yourself going for the next probably twenty years. It's not, these plans happen very often without minor updates. We really want this to be your next twenty year vision. And so from that community profile and that inventory, we, we take that profile and it turns right into your goals and strategies. So we're looking at identifying those issues, identifying the obstacles, and identifying the solutions. We're really here to help you with the solutions so that you have something that is implementable in the long term. And it's not just pie in the sky and a wish list. We want to make sure that we're able to achieve those items as part of those goals and strategies. So those goals are going to focus on all of those areas of the plan that we mentioned. We're going to make sure that we touch on economic growth and sustainability, your agriculture, your open space. We will come up with tools for you that will help you put all of these elements into place. A lot of it is going to be policy. Some of them are going to be projects. But you're going to have all of them together to be able to come up with a long-term planning process that will, that will serve your community. Looking at your hamlets, looking at your villages, and how they will all play together. Looking at ways to share services in a way that enhance sense of place within your community. looking at ways to share services in a way that you can sense a place within your community. Touched on the sustainable future, I know we're getting close on time, but we really want to make sure that what we have is the right size and custom fit to you. We want to make sure that what we hear and what we promote is really a stewardship of your resources, looking at health and safety, looking at ways to make you more vibrant and a long-term success for your residents, for your businesses. We always like to plan for those that live here and make it a great place to live and want to work, live, work, and play. And then if others want to come, that's great. If you're planning for your current residents, you're planning for your future generations of kids and make sure that they want to come back. Dave mentioned the children, it's a huge important part of the planning process. We often recommend that you look at even like 11th graders or juniors in high school to see if they want to serve as one of your community members.
We mentioned nine to 11. We want to find juniors because seniors graduate halfway through the process. So you want to find a junior and you want to have them represent, make them run a meeting at the school. So get them involved in your process.
Or student council, they'd be a great advocate for our meeting as well.
Have you guys ever worked with, whether it's a government club or an HAW committee in a high school and you had them do almost like a Quinn and Piac style poll where they made some phone calls, targeted, asked questions and provided feedback?
That would be great. I haven't had to make the phone calls, but that would be a great idea.
I have some experience with some of the juniors and seniors in high school. They're excellent on the calls if you get the right people that are involved, like a government club maybe. And it's good practice for them.
We use CNA research poll to college kids by us.
Yeah.
It's a good idea to get high school kids involved with that. We've also worked with, I didn't make up the name, it's PIG, Participation in Government Class. And they come and they participate, but when we worked on an economic development plan in Augusta County, Virginia even, we went to the schools. We sat in there, government class, and we presented the workshop that we would do at night to the students. And we asked for their input. Theirs was economic development, that was their plan. It was manufacturing, it was a manufacturing and distribution hub of Virginia. And I asked them to close their eyes and I asked each one of them to raise their hand. They wanted to go into manufacturing. Not one person did. I closed their eyes because they more apt to be truthful and no one's looking at them under pressure. And then I asked them, how many of them have family members in manufacturing? And three quarters of the class raised their hand. And then I said, how many people want to make $80,000 in two years out of high school with no college degree, but using their fingers and playing a video game on iPad? Boom. Because that's what the new manufacturing was in that county. All done with robots and using iPads, moving people around, and within two years they made $80,000. And it was eye-opening, there was ways that those people that were not going to go to college that wanted to get involved in manufacturing were afraid of mom and dad's manufacturing, you know, the Illo Lucy manufacturing where they're doing the chops and throwing them down and trying to run around. They were afraid of that. They're not afraid of the new technology and it's educating them on what's out there. And they began a manufacturing class. They went out and actually went and visited Coca-Cola and a few others they had there. So it was fun. So getting them involved and engaged is key because we all know that often if our kids leave, they're leaving for jobs or college. We want them to come back. And often people leave, they come back in five or eight years. The question we ask them is, what do you want to see this town in eight, 10 years? What are we missing today that's going to help bring you back after college or after wherever you go, whether it's the military or vocational school? What are we missing? And what do you want to see here? Because what Jamie says is right, they're going to be our residents longer than we're going to be residents. Just nature. We want to make sure they want to come back and grow and live in our communities. And part of that is giving them the tools, the policies to help maintain that quality of life, whether it's growth boundaries that you put into your zoning and land use, whether it's economic plans you do to create better partnership with our business community, whether it's educational opportunities that linkages back to the schools, whether it's working on sharing services with our villages to lower the cost they can afford to live here. Those are all part of the planning process. That's what makes planning so much fun. It's being able to work with you as a board and public as a whole, all generations and figuring out how we are, where we want to be, how we can get there.
So it's kind of the final nugget of what we'll provide here is the implementation matrix. And I don't want to downplay this slide at all. It's where it's a culmination of all your goals, all your strategies, but it's also all the partnerships you've built throughout those months of planning, the months of interacting, engaging. This is where you really charge your partners to say, you're going to be responsible for helping with this project, this is where I need you. But we also link that with funding resources so you know where you're able to get additional grant funding sources, where you're able to start leveraging, and with those partners, public, private, you're able to do more with less to be able to really accomplish this planning process.
That matrix is key because it shows you what your priorities are for short-term, mid-term, long-term. But the grant funding, in the consolidated funding application now, I'm sure you all are familiar with that, the last Friday, every July, every grant application goes back and says, how does this project relate to your locally adopted plan? They ask for copies of it, they ask for citations from it, and they want to make sure that what you're asking for, partnership with the state and local governments, isn't just a pie in the sky, isn't just a wish list or the town board, but it's actually in your local plan. So that matrix becomes the foundation, going back to what we started on the first slide with, your blueprint for action.
Then it'll also identify all your code revisions to make sure that as we look at your zoning, you understand what needs to be modified based upon this plan to make sure your zoning, when we get to that implementation, is consistent with your comprehensive plan as well. And that I know is the key element that will come out of your first implementation step. But there'll also be the low-hanging fruits that are identified, things that you can do within the first 100 days, the first couple of months that you're able to say to the public, I heard what you said and I'm doing this right away. And some of those will be very low-cocks and easy to do. Schedule-wise, we had initially proposed a 14-month process, 12 to 14 months. You would have, within that timeline, a plan that's available and able to review within a year is the idea. The adoption process has some secret, in the secret component, it takes a little bit of time towards the end, but we want to make sure that you don't have planning fatigue process, we don't want to drag it out longer because when the public says, we had a meeting three, six months ago and now what's going on? So we want to make sure that the momentum carries through and that you're able to achieve this succinctly. But also line you up for the next round of grant opportunities. We want to make sure that you're not missing the opportunities going forward and that you're able to move towards implementation and line them up together.
Part of it's not on here's parallel tracks. When you mentioned earlier, they were completely flexible in how we craft the final scope of services. But there may be some goals that were in your 2010 plan of your amendments, and I do may want to put into zoning right away. You're allowed to parallel track the con-plan and those zoning changes. Zoning has to be in concert with the locally adopted plan, so we have to be moved within that. You can do zoning at the end, you can do parts of it during. You may want to apply for a grant this summer for the promise of our community to do your zoning updates. So when you finish this plan, you can move right into zoning. You may want to apply to Hudson River Greenway for a planning grant to help do some of the public participation or visualization. So all those parallel tracks, it's as if you have trains leaving the station at different times, all ending in the same place. So there are a lot of opportunities you can do to be flexible. So I mentioned why our team, normally I'm standing up, I'm very excited, moving around and engaging back and forth. So forgive me for sitting as we do this, but we have a team that's very educated, experienced, and dedicated. I mentioned at the beginning of this that we seek out certain types of projects. Our team is staffed for this type of a project. We have the economic development experts, the planning experts, public participation experts, all coming together to assist you in balancing all the items that Nicole mentioned are integral to a comprehensive planning process. Our emphasis is on implementable plans. We're not just a one-of-a-mile-planning firm to give you a plan, just sit in the shelf and put out a website saying, hey, look, we did a plan. That does nothing. We've been around for 55 years with long-term clients, 20, 30, and 40 years because of the relationship that gets built between the engineering aspect, make sure that's rooted in reality, the planning aspect, and the grant aspect. And that's what we want to see here. We want to see your blueprint turn into actionable items, so you see results. The projects that your community planned together come to fruition. It's a really tough thing to get community residents out. And I say that, I know we have a full room, there's always a hot button issue or two or three that brings out a group of people. Over a planning process, sometimes that waits. Our goal isn't just to reach those people with issues that they wear on their buttons, I say that for planning, but it's also get residents as a whole involved. But to keep them engaged after the plan is to use your plan, show progress in those actions, and show that not their views were important to planning, but also in the implementation of your new Montgomery. That's our, that's really our business plan, that's really how we work. And we look forward to the opportunity to answer any questions you have and to bring to bear the resources of the entire community. What must have been mine? It was mine. And that's where I come in and just move it away. And I want to commit all the resources of the Verge Group to your project, not just the planners that are inside our proposal, but our engineers, our architects, our development specialists, our funding specialists, they're all part of the process. They're all part of our team. They're all available to you, the town, and the residents to help make this project a reality.
We've talked a lot about the process and program for the plan. I can assure you, we talked a lot and did a tour around the community. We talked a lot about community compatibility. We understand the growth management discussion going on. And obviously with three villages and your hamlet areas, with your villages and your hamlet areas, those corridors between the villages are so important in terms of sense of place and community compatibility. The appearance of those corridors, how those corridors work for people who also walk, who might take their bicycle out and get up to Route 52 and 208 around the scenic byway or on the Wallkill Valley rail trail. Ben mentioned about the Wallkill River, making sure that we protect the watersheds of the Wallkill, of the Quasaeic. I know we got a little bit of the Quasaeic over on the Newburgh side and also Mood Creek, but also that you're using the benefits of the river, synchronizing with the work of the Wallkill watershed lines as they emphasize the river orientation. We talked about the infrastructure of the community and we talked about the recreation assets, whether it's Stewart State Forest or the various parks around the community. Those were some of the aspects that especially we talked about in addition to obviously agriculture and that sense of place and sense of space with agriculture. You've got a nice divide there under, is it over by, I can't remember the name of the road where she, geez, I can't think of the name of the town, the name of the road over by where eighty-four and the Wallkill meet. Got a nice defined edge over by the airport there.
46.
Yeah, a very nicely defined edge. And in communities we've worked in, trying to help guide growth is so much about your planning and your zoning strategy.
All right, thank you so much. I want to open up to our council for questions. Charity, do you have anything? That's pretty full, right. Cindy, anything? I feel like Chris is going to hit it on the line. Go ahead.
No, I already asked online last week.
Oh, get that.
I had sticky notes before I, you know, then.
Sticky notes, impressive. Ron?
One quick question, or two quick questions. One is, after the comprehensive plan is developed by our people and you're two months down the road, something goes awry, we all agree upon it, you guys plus, and who's responsible for that legal, if there is a problem?
If there's a problem or amendment, so if there's something that needs to be tweaked and we'll work with you and make sure that it's reflected. But the...
Now, my question is, if you decide the comprehensive plan, we want to delay, you see everybody agrees upon that, and then two months down the road, B, we get a lawsuit because B's not legal.
Well, the town adopts it, so they would be suing us.
Well, first, the comprehensive plan is not law. Comprehensive plan is community vision. So you're not suing on vision, you're suing on zoning. It's at different...
But during the planning process, there's a lot of things that can happen. I've worked in one community where we were just about to hit adoption and then they were hit by a hurricane or anything and it completely flooded their hamlet. And so, at that moment, you can't say, that's the plan we have for today, we need to do something different. And we do that, like it's not just or right to put something in that's not reflective of what the needs are. So we make sure that if something changes, if we need to turn a left, we'll stop and we'll work with you to figure out what that left needs to be. But once you get to the adoption stage, it would be a little different to just make sure that we, you just have to look at other amendments or minor updates and it would be reflected. But we'll work with you with whatever those rights and lapses need to be reflected.
And the total man hours that you put in this particular package of about 776, is that reflective in tonight's presentation?
Yeah.
Even if you have to bring in your experts?
Yeah. We have, I mentioned before, we can bring Nan in, it reduces hours, half-hours on that task. And then Nan takes those hours. So we've worked in with Nan on partnership on act plans and comprehensive plans, on economic plans. Nan and I actually went to grad school together a long, long, long time ago.
It's pretty much a long, long contract.
Yes.
Subcontract.
If your council people, if your community people, if you want stuff to delay you to a point that you don't feel comfortable with, what happens?
We come back and talk with you about it. And so, if all of a sudden you decide you want to add three more public meetings and create sections of the town, or you want to add different aspect that we can talk about, in front of you, we can talk about how that adjusts in the budget or if we can get grant lines for it. I committed, what we committed is a firm to try to get you an initial $10,000 grant at the Hudson River, at the Hudson Valley Greenway. So that gives you a little buffer, automatic. Secondarily, this crosses two different budget cycles, it allows you to go for any grants this summer with a partial order draft plan. So you may decide that, you know, the Wallkill River is going to, you wanted that to play a larger role in the vision at the beginning, let's put in an LWRP grant for the visioning of how that relates to open space or recreation or hamlets or economic opportunity. And by that grant in the summer, that's what we did in Esauvus. Esauvus had decided that they were supposed to play a larger role in the final comprehensive plan and land use and opportunity, so they applied for a grant, got more money, pretty much a phase two, which is LWRP. They also wanted to do a Hudson River stabilization, shoreline stabilization of that park. As we developed a plan, they put in a grant for that too. So all they had on is that grant funded, came out of the planning process, plus a division on day one review.
All right. Anything else, Ron?
No, thank you.
All right, we got to wrap this up, but we're going to be going over our comprehensive plan committee resumes. You've worked with a lot of con-plans. What is a healthy number? What do you guys, I'm sure you've seen a lot of different ways of doing this, so what is your advice for us?
I would say for a committee, you're looking at nine to 13 for a comprehensive plan. When you get into the policy for some zoning, you're going to want to keep that on a smaller number, with more intimate group.
Have you done that and worked within maybe like an 11-member committee and said, okay, we're going to break it down to these four or five that are going to focus on some of the zoning?
I just meant as part of a planning process.
Okay.
So like for the comprehensive plan, I think 11 member would be great, and you can even break that up into smaller groups to say, this group's going to do agriculture.
Okay, that's a good point.
But that way they can have some focus. But I think when you're doing the policy, you're going to want to make that smaller.
Okay.
Zoning being five.
Then you're looking at, right, then you're looking at your planning board chair, your zoning board chair, those are really very intimate with the policy, because they're implementing what the community had in place.
All right, thanks so much. Anything else from the board?
That 11 is not including the student answer.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I look forward to your email with the questions that I spoke to you about and what the references were.
And just a comment for the public, when we have public comment and you guys have specific questions, they're going to be in direct contact with us. We don't plan to make a decision this evening, so if you have a comment, we can take it back to them, create some feedback, we set it up with the board, so I want you to let you know that that opportunity can exist. We need to take a five-minute recess to allow the next one to come in, potentially set up some equipment as well. So we'll take that for recess right now. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Good. That's the one that's...
Answer all your questions.
Pretty soon.
Hey. Good job.
That's just...
Good job.
Sure I can find it.
I already spoke to Sean about this.
How are you?
How are you?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, Southside.
So they're in an emergency situation and they want, they said, we're looking at one hotel that's designed. Really? On my website, that's what they want. Down here, we did Tuxedo. We did Town of Hallowell in Sullivan County. And Delaware, Town of Delaware in Delaware County, right near Hallowell.
Are you guys staying for the next? I'm gonna steal your seat. I said I'm gonna steal your seat.
Hey, Mark, you got a second? Um, so you, do you need help with plugging in?
Uh, I think we just need to know we want to.
So you guys are gonna be right in these three chairs. You got a second?
I know you have a call.
No, you can call me out there, whatever.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you. I see you. Oh, you have the key. I'm going like, I'm doing the.
Yeah, just trying to get out of the way.
So did he? Well, I definitely, yeah, it's good. Okay.
Out in the hallway, Ron? Out in the hallway, there's a thing right to the bathroom. Yeah, that's what I wanted to do. I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna pick that stuff up. What's that?
Let me just give it out. We have plenty of ones here. Actually, yeah, face that. Yeah, we can hear in there, just talk, or you should pick it up.
Can I?
We don't want.
Oh, no. Oh, you're just gonna have to.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna be in the meeting. Welcome. Hold on, let me get this right. Nelson Pope and Borges, welcome.
Welcome.
This is your second trip to the town of Montgomery. I was actually one of the residents previously before being elected, so I got to see the presentation. I know, I think Chris and Ron have not, they did not see it, but we're looking forward to this one. And Flora George.
All right. We did, for those members, especially the new members, if you, do you all have a copy of the proposal? Okay, great. I'll have a color copy if anyone wants, so we can see your.
You want a color tablet? Go look at that. That's great.
Thank you. So my name is Bonnie Franzen. I'm a partner with Nelson Pope and Borges. And I'm here with Matt Stock, who is also a partner with Nelson Pope and Borges. We are located in Suffolk in Rockland County. We ourselves are Orange County residents, so we are local and we know local situations and the circumstances and economy of Orange County. So we're just actually partners. Our PowerPoint doesn't wanna work with us today, I guess. We wanna make sure the public has the opportunity to get this, you know. All right, thanks, guys. Do you want us to keep going, Brian?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know, because you have other items on your agenda. So I'll just introduce myself again, especially for those of the new board members. My name is Bonnie Franzen. Again, I sort of am a partner with the firm. I have thirty years of environmental planning experience within the Hudson Valley region. I am presently the Town of Monroe Planning Board Chairwoman, so I know what it's like to sit on a board and have to review applications and make decisions. But we also, prior to me becoming Planning Board Chairwoman, I was working on, we prepared a comp plan for the Town of Monroe as well as a new zoning. We work for the Town of Hyde Park doing form-based coding. Form-based coding is where it's more design-oriented rather than worrying as much about the uses. It's especially relevant in downtown areas or places where you wanna have a downtown environment. Thank you. We just finished a comprehensive plan and zoning amendment for the village of Hillburn. And it's important to note that whenever we work on any of these particular projects, it's unique and each of these comprehensive plans or zoning amendments are tailored to the uniqueness of each municipality. In the village of Hillburn, they have a very historic site. If you know anything about it, the Willoughby Indians are there, and they have a spiritual sacred site called Split Rock. So one of the big recommendations of that particular plan was to preserve that location. But again, it's specific to each community and that's what we do as far as our comprehensive planning process. We're working in the village of Monroe. We work in the village of Tuxedo Park, the Town of Blooming Grove. I attend Blooming Grove meetings, Village South Blooming Grove meetings, Town of Tuxedo meetings. I represent those boards, I review the applications. So we understand the implications of having a comprehensive plan and what it means when a development application comes in, because the comprehensive plan is really the basis. We need to look at that and say, is this project consistent with our plan? And the zoning, once you've adopted a comp plan, must be in accordance with your comprehensive plan. You can't have two documents that are different. I'm also working nearby in the Town of Shanga, and we are just finishing a comprehensive plan there, which focuses on revitalization of the hamlets of the Walchil and the Walchil Valley. And I mentioned the Town of Tuxedo as well. So those are my recent projects. We'll talk a little more about projects after you go through your experience.
I'm Max Stock, and I will most likely be heading up the project with close consultation with Bonnie. I'm happy to say that last night in the village of Haverstraw, our steering committee just recommended this document for adoption to the village board, so I brought a copy of it for you to peruse, gives an idea of the quality of work and the quality of our deliverable. We also recently just wrapped up a comprehensive plan in the Town of Mamikating, just over the ridge in Sullivan County. We are currently working on a comprehensive plan in the village of Chestnut Ridge in Rockland County. So we're very well-versed in a lot of the issues confronting the region, whether it be traffic, religious land uses, taxes, employment, all of these issues we're very well-versed in. Will be backed up by two other planners. Jonathan Lockman is a senior planner. He specializes in resiliency and sea level rise studies, climate change, climate smart communities, increased flood risk. And Adriana Beltrani, who is very environmental-focused, but also does a lot of the research and demographics support for the project. So what are our strengths? What do we feel are strengths? Oh, Bonnie, I forwarded it. There we go. We will assign to you senior staff. Both Bonnie and I are partners of the firm, and we will oversee day-to-day operations. When you have a comprehensive plan meeting with your committee, I will be there or Bonnie will be there. You're getting top-level staffing from the firm. We, individually, I have twenty-one years of experience. Bonnie has.
Over thirty.
Over thirty years of experience. The partners that are better, the first backup, Jonathan, also has more than thirty years experience. So we have been through the process of preparing plans and know how it should be done. We're also local. Our office is based out of Suffolk. Bonnie and I are both Orange County residents. We work a lot in the county, we live in the county. We have a lot of Orange County experience. Bonnie, as she mentioned, was, is the Planning Board Chairwoman for the Town of Monroe. We're also working for the village of Woodbury. We are working also for the Town of Tuxedo. And we have actually represented development applications throughout the county. Not recently, but actually also in the Town of Montgomery. So we sort of understand the perspective from both sides of the table, and we understand the capabilities of builders and the needs of builders, but we also understand their capabilities to modify plans when necessary and to adjust their developments.
To fit within the community.
Correct. We think we bring unique expertise to the table. We have provided sessions and instruction at Orange County Planning Federation. I did a session on comprehensive planning at the Orange County Planning Federation. Bonnie and I regularly do the planning board and zoning board training for Rockland County Planning Federation. We have on staff recently hired the president of the Westchester County Planning Federation, Valerie, and we have regularly taught at New York Planning Federation's annual conference. In fact, we just agreed today to do the session on comprehensive planning and zoning. So we'll be doing a session on that in April of this year. We believe we also bring longevity. Where we are at work, we've typically been there for a long time. On Glencoe, Long Island, that was one of my first clients. I've been planning in Glencoe since two thousand and three. My boss, Stuart Turner, who is still with the firm, started there in nineteen sixty-seven. So we believe our longevity with our communities speaks to the quality of our work and the ability to get assignments done quickly and with good quality. We already spoke about perspective. We work for a range of clients. So we have private clients, we have public clients, we work for nonprofits, we work for small cities, we work for rural towns. So we believe we bring a lot of breadth of knowledge to the table.
So our clients and core services, comprehensive planning and zoning amendments, is certainly a core of what we do. The map that we present on this slide shows where we've done comprehensive planning and zoning amendments. In red, I added the Town of Poughkeepsie, right now we're working on the Town of Poughkeepsie's master plan update. We are also retained to work on the Town of Carmel's comprehensive plan. And there, that's special because of the fact that they're within New York City DEP watersheds. So environmental is particularly, water quality is a particular topic that we have to address in Carmel. One that's not listed that we just started working on is in the Town of Hurley. We're initially doing some work evaluating multifamily housing and where it's allowed in the town. And we've started a meeting with the committee and that'll break out into a comprehensive planning process as well. We represent planning boards and town boards, so again, we are familiar with what is confronted by a town board, what's confronted by a planning board, whether it's a development application, zone petitions, variance requests. We do the nuts and bolts. So while we can prepare visionary plans, again, we understand the implications of putting those plans together and how it filters down to zoning and development reviews and open up developments.
And just so that way my fellow members up here know that Bonnie is retained by our planning board.
That's very recent, correct?
Yes.
When did they appoint you?
At the beginning of twenty twenty. Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I had to add that.
Thank you. So another strength of ours is seeker review. We perform a lot of environmental quality review. We prepare the documents and we also review the documents. We worked for a long time on reviewing Tuxedo Reserve, which is a twelve-hundred-unit development in the Town of Tuxedo. But we've also reviewed two subdivisions. So we know seeker, and it's important because when you adopt a comprehensive plan, you must comply with the environmental quality review regulations. And when you adopt a plan, it's a type-one action. It requires at least a long-form EAF, but we're proposing to do a generic environmental impact statement to fully evaluate the potential impacts associated with a comprehensive plan and its adoption from a generic perspective, policy adoption perspective. Community participation and management, I'll get more into that in our slide about that, but we really wanna tailor that to your community. We wanna meet with you as a town board and meet with the comprehensive plan committee and discuss what's the best way to reach your community. We're very local. Right now, our proposal, and we'll get into it, anticipates at least four vision workshops. We don't propose to concentrate or bunch them. We like to have them spaced out during the time period that the comprehensive plan is being prepared, because you get, some people can attend one, other people can attend another. And it's also an opportunity to present different ideas and how the ideas are evolving as we work with the comprehensive plan committee. So again, community participation management is key because we're facilitators. We're really facilitating the comprehensive plan committee, and we wanna hear from the public specifically, because this is your town. We're not here to tell you, we facilitate the process. We kinda touched upon sustainability, sustainability and resiliency. We believe our plans are sustainable. We want them to be energy-efficient, we want them to be, to balance economy and environmental protection. So again, that's part of our goal of preparing comprehensive plans. One thing that we added that wasn't in our prior presentation, presentation is grant writing. On the next page, I just put in some representative grants that we've worked on. And so, you know, it's not just about putting a plan together, it's about, once you define a plan and you've adopted it, what do you have to do to implement the type of plan? So our grants writer, we have two offices, our office and a Melville office. We have been successful in securing very large grants for a municipality that follows on the heel of the spell of a comprehensive plan document. And it's important that your comprehensive plan talk about projects that you might wanna pursue, because the consolidated funding process, the CFA process, they want to see when they're going to consider an application for funding, that this is part of a plan that you anticipated. So again, look at the comprehensive plan as a document where it's an opportunity to set yourself up for funding down the road, for whatever the projects are that come out of the process or that may be in line right now. The next page, we talk about project tasks, and it is in your scoping process, but, you know, we're aware that your plan right now is from nineteen eighty-eight, obviously outdated. There have been much changes in the national and the county and the local economy, and certainly changes in the community from a land use perspective. So it's timely to be putting. So it's timely to be putting a plan together. Our first task is really a project kickoff meeting with the CPC. It can involve the town board as well. Just to go over what you anticipate, what we anticipate through the process, spell out what the tasks are going to be, start to talk about what the community engagement process should be, and to ensure that we have all information, all studies, anything that we should be aware of as background as we go forward through the process. The next task, we actually enjoy, it's a field visit. We just recently did it up in Poughkeepsie where we got a fire district van. A whole bunch of the community, or the CPC committee members got in the van, and we drove around the entire town. And it's amazing how much, because people kind of know their corner sometimes, but when you drive around, you can talk about, well, this particular area, this is an issue confronting it, but it's flooding agricultural preservation, maybe something a goal you want to achieve, areas where you're proposing economic development. And it's a great learning experience, especially for committee members that may not be long-term board members. You know, they're coming up to speed with issues and information about various parts of the town. And when we've done this, our committees have said that it's really been very educational for them. After field visit, and we ourselves go around the town. We don't like to put plans together that are just based on mapping. We drive the town. We actually know the town because we're from Orange County, and we've been up here and visited and recreated. But we really make sure to drive every road. Part of it, you can see some of the photos we have were taken when we're putting a proposal together. We want to know your town in depth. The community outreach engagement plan, that, again, I'll touch upon in another slide, but we again tailor it to the community. And it's not just about public workshops. It's about social media. It's about surveys. It's about attending events that may be held in the town or it's community day, and just to solicit as much input as possible from the community at large. Our inventory analysis, we make sure that we have a robust update on the existing conditions within the town, which includes demographics, who we're planning for. What is the demography? What is the population of the town? Do we have a large senior population? Do we have a lot of children? We need to know who we're planning for and who we anticipate to be planning for. Utilities, land use and zoning, the environmental features in the town, whether it's steep slopes, wetlands, floodplains, transportation routes. Again, we do a very detailed and expanded analysis of the town as a basis for the comprehensive plan committee to really look at what the issues are and what the opportunities are. We need that background, especially since it's very, 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 very years old, what presently exists. Our fifth task is to conduct a public online survey. Again, not everybody can attend a workshop. And even if they attend a workshop, there are just certain individuals who they may be, you know, reserved. They may not feel as comfortable expressing themselves in front of the public. There are people who work during the day. We tailor our participation plans even to try to do it at night, during the day, on the weekends. But even then, we may not capture people. And so having an online survey allows people to get online and be able to do it from the comfort of their home, and we get a lot of input that way. It's a really good tool. Six is the workshops. Again, we envision four of them. Putting the proposal together, we anticipated, but again, this is based on discussion with the town, that there would be possibly two within the villages themselves to get input from village residents. So one from Montgomery, sorry, three, one from Montgomery, one from Walden, one from Maybrook, and then a fourth that would be held for the town at large. They can be combined. We can do it differently, but that was our initial thinking to kind of capture a majority of the population. We then, once we've had the public input, we've had CPC input, and we've had inventory analysis, we developed a vision for the town and the goals and objectives and how the town will move forward over the next ten years. We pull that all together into a draft plan. That gets presented to the public. We hold public hearings and we ensure that we go through the secret process. We amend it as necessary. And then ultimately, the town board, once the CPC has recommended a board, sorry, has recommended a plan to you, you consider it, you might want to revise it, and then you will go with the adoption of a plan. So that's the overall project tasks.
So I'm just going to go over our approach. So not so much on a step-by-step basis, but sort of how do we look at, what are the major principles we consider when preparing? The first one is that this is your plan, this isn't our plan. So we don't come to you with preconceived notions. We don't try to fit strategies that we developed for other communities here. We listen to you, and we come up with creative strategies to confront the issues that you're dealing with and to achieve your vision. So as Bonnie said, this is a vision-based plan, a community-based vision. It starts with the vision, and then it goes to objectives, goals and objectives typically. Goals are broad aspirational statements. Objectives are more discrete and finite milestones to achieve. And finally, recommendations for achieving the vision. But it all starts with you, not with us. We are supporting the CPC. The people doing the work are the committee. They're the ones who have to work on the plan. We're going to facilitate it. We're going to provide it. We're going to present it graphically and through text. But the ideas start with your committee. Again, we start with the public outreach early because we don't come with ideas. So we need to hear the public to start the foundation, build upon that with the analysis. We always use the most up-to-date data. Orange County GIS is a great resource. Some of their data is really old. So we know where it needs to be updated, where we have to go to your assessors to update land use. We know where we have to go to New York State to DOT to get information on accidents. And we can present that data, the most up-to-date and accurate data, to your committee to make informed decisions. So we tend to be observation-driven. So we take your committee through the information to come to the right goals and objectives to serve the vision. We recommend implementable and actionable recommendations, or we recommend implementable and actionable measures, which means there is room for great vision and creativity, but you also have to be practical. So you have to identify realistic goals. And because we work, we're not just plan drafters. We actually work with boards. We work with private developers. We know what is achievable. We understand what is practical. So we don't necessarily want to stifle creativity and thought, but we always want to ground it with real world-based input.
I think another way to say that is we don't want to make fuzzy plans. There are a lot of plans that you'll see that they have beautiful pictures, and they say, you know, there's a vision for it, and, you know, the town wants to achieve the following, but they're really not actionable. So, you know, you want a path to implement your goals and your recommendations and not just the pretty pictures, so.
And there may be a multi-tiered approach to a certain recommendation. I, in Haverstraw, for example, which you have the plan here, they wanted to look at form-based zoning. And form-based zoning is a great new technique that regulates land use based on form rather than separation of uses into traditional yards. But the reality is it has a very high cost of entry. You have to hire architects to come in and look at your community and come up with a regulating plan. And it's several hundred thousand dollars to do a form-based zoning code. So what are the other steps, the interim steps, to achieve that, that goal of preserving historic character, preserving community character that you can take? For example, allowing for planning board flexibility if they meet certain design standards. That is a maybe a first step. A second step might be developing architectural design guidelines and an architect order, empowering your architectural review board and your applicants with concrete design guidelines. That might be a second step. And then third step, maybe you actually can do the form-based code if you get the funding to allow that or make that possible. So that's sort of our step. The other thing that's worth talking about is when we draft plans, we want to make sure that they're defensible. So our approach in starting with the public is part of making your plan defensible. Our incorporation of Seeker into your plan, we like to, as much as possible, do environmental discussions right in the plan so that we are considering the seeker process or the secret considerations, what's known as secret calculus, weighing environmental, social, and economic considerations when you're going through the recommendations, when you're going through your goals. So that's, that's our approach. We talked about, yeah. So in terms of, and we've talked about some of this stuff already, baseline inventory analysis, we want to make sure we're using the best information available. We really use the information, the mapping, the data to help your committee make informed decisions. So I was wondering if that was me. And so you want to go on with our stakeholder.
Yeah. I just wanted to say one thing with the based on inventory analysis. We talk about visualization of data. You know, we know the county can prepare maps, which can be cost-effective, but we like to have the geographic information mapping because we do analyses with it. And on that page, that's the town of Poughkeepsie, we actually were able to get accident data from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen and map it out. And so, you know, that's kind of key in the municipality, understanding what roads are maybe burdened or may have issues. So it's not just about showing a map and saying, well, these are the routes. It's actually adding data to it that's meaningful, that will give you information to make recommendations.
So what were you saying specifically?
About visualization.
Yeah, were you looking for the data sets in GIS or were you looking?
So we, so we, we not only just get GIS and data sets, but we manipulate the data, we analyze the data. It's, it's showing it in a way that's meaningful for the analyses that the CPC wants to do. We've also, for instance, overlaid the zoning and shown all the parcel sizes. And we may determine that there's an area that is in fact not conforming and should be rezoned for the homes so that they're not having to go through all these variances because they happen to not be zoned properly, which is, which is a cost for homeowners. So we take the data and then we use it in meaningful ways and do analyses with those data.
Yeah, and another example, in addition to the, to the traffic accident mapping, might be historic resources. So if you, you can get great information off of Chris, but it's really putting it on a map, looking at the map, and understanding how these resources relate to each other to determine whether there might be a case for a district.
Right.
A local district or a national district. So it's not about just presenting data. It's about helping your committee to identify what that story is.
Right.
Geography of data, if you will.
If historic preservation is important, then we find ways to get the information. Another example is we had the ability with the county of data, the building dates are often on them. And so we can actually map all the homes that are, let's say, before eighteen hundred, eighteen to eighteen fifty. And when you see a cluster of them, you know that that's going to be an area that's historic, and you may want to pay particular attention to them. So again, just another way of grabbing data from the property and using it in a way that may guide some of the recommendations. Stakeholder and community engagement, these are just examples of online surveys, Word Cloud. With the vision statements, we often like to ask the question, you know, if I'm in your town and you had to describe the vision for the next ten years, what would be the most, the three most important words to use in that vision? You know, is it going to be environmental protection, scenic, economy? But we ask that in the online survey and at the workshops, and that helps form the vision. That's going to kind of be the overarching statement that guides, again, over the next ten years, how you want your community to evolve. Again, we talked about websites, surveys, workshops, focus groups. It may be that the town wants us to work with a group of economic, topic, economic development agencies. Part of our outreach is also just doing staff interviews. We want to interview people from the planning board, the zoning board, the town board, the building department. You know, what are the variances? What are the trends?
Sewer, highway.
Sewer, highway. Of course, we'll map all the sewer districts and the water districts, but to talk to them individually to find out what's the capacity, what's the demand, what are the issues? So doing a deep dive into interviewing your various staff and then talking to the CPC and finding who else you want to meet with. And maybe if there are tourism-related uses and operators and you want to kind of deal out why Montgomery is popular for certain uses, we could have a focus group and discuss that and meet with them and get ideas from them.
I, I just want to add one thing to that, which is the website. So through our experience is, once you get the public engaged at the first meeting, you'll get a little bit of buzz around town. And it's important that there be a point of contact with the public between meetings that they can go, if they hear their neighbor talking about it, they can go on the website. They can see the same information that was presented at the last meeting. They can see when the next meeting is going to come up. They can look through and read the minutes of the committee as it's, as the plan's developing. So you want to have that constant point of contact. So what we do is we always recommend the website be constantly updated with any deliverables as we're giving them to the committee. Put them up, let the public mull over them, and hopefully they come out at the next meeting and discuss them in more depth.
And it's just a way of being transparent, you know, letting the public know where we are in the process and having the same information that the CPC has. Analysis and recommendations, making connections. So this is just an example from the town of Shangam where they asked us to map land uses that are along the Walco River because they wanted, and this happens to be a Walco hamlet. They wanted to get a sense of what can they possibly achieve. They are very, very excited and desire to create a riverwalk. They want to reactivate their downtown. They want to establish where buildings should be so they can place a riverwalk along the Walco River and get that as a focal point for people into the hamlet. So, you know, there's a lot of analysis that's done to then be able to formulate a potential path for that walkway. And then once the plan is adopted, actually look for funding, look for partnerships with private landowners to achieve these objectives. Because some of these improvements actually are win-win situations. Having a walkway may also improve the ability of a private property owner who may have a business that may bring people to that business. So we try to find those private, you know, private-public opportunities and for improvements and to accomplish recommendations.
So we talk a lot in planning about sustainability. And again, that's balancing between environment, economics, and social equity. This is something that is done a lot in New York State with planning processes because of Seeker. That is essentially the seeker calculus, what you have to weigh and balance before you approve a major development or land use regulation. But we're seeing it more and more leading towards understanding the interrelationship of the environment and the economy. So we work very closely with the Climate Smart Community Program. They actually funded our most recent plan, the Haverstraw Plan. And they are a source, a great resource for communities that want to become more energy-efficient, that want to become more efficient in general in terms of operations. They provide great funding for projects. They provide great funding for projects in communities. Whether it might be regulations for evolving concerns such as battery storage or solar. It provides opportunities for infrastructure investments.
Charging stations.
From, from charging stations to town hall energy upgrades. There's a whole laundry list of ways that the Climate Smart Communities Program can help. So, we believe we bring that knowledge base to the plan as an added value to our regular preparation.
So, ultimately, the, the output of all this process is a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan update. In the case of the town of Montgomery, because this is from 1988, it'll probably be a brand-new comprehensive plan. And, um...
So, just quickly for a point of clarification, and this is something that's just kind of a misnomer and something that I even learned as I started to get in office.
Yes.
There actually was updates to the comprehensive plan in 2010.
Yes.
And, uh, just for a point of, just clarity, like, there, there is, there was some work done and some, some things made to our plan in 2010.
Yep, there, there was actually a lot of work done in 2010. And then, I guess, there was litigation. And, and so, the status of that plan, we can gather and we can use the information from the 2010.
Yeah.
But, um, because of, I think, what then happened with that plan, I don't know ultimately whether it's still in place.
So, there were changes that are in place that were adopted in 2000.
It's not in place?
There were certain aspects to 2010 that, that are currently in place. There are two areas that were thrown out or not.
Yeah.
But there were, there were zoning changes made that have been changed in 2010. And it was actually the 2003-based comprehensive plan. And in 2010, a law was created that took a portion of that. And it was adopted, am I correct, Stephanie?
Yeah, you might be referencing the 2003 plan that got thrown out because of litigation.
Correct.
It was an extra plan, and that was the land master lawsuit.
Hey, I learned that too, so we can, we can, we can have our clerks any of the 2010 law.
But technically, I believe our planning board is referencing the 1988 plan.
Yeah, I, I...
And that's why, that's maybe where you're, you're getting that from, because it'll work with the planning board.
And, and frankly, that's just a reason at this point, and even if it's 2003, that's, that's two years, right? How many years, yeah, how many years old? So, these really, they used to have a shelf life of 20 years, maybe 30 years. But with the rapidly changing economy and environment, they really have more of a shelf life of 10 years nowadays. So, again, these are just variations of, and our way of showing you, the board, that we tailor our comprehensive plans to each community. The image on the left is actually a, um, the form-based code that's in Hyde Park. They wanna redevelop the Pinewoods area that's on Route 9, it's a very historic community. And they do wanna pursue more of an architectural design type of zoning rather than worrying about the uses there. The im- image in the middle was, in that particular community, what came out of it was they felt they really needed design guidelines. So, they integrate the design guidelines right into the comprehensive plan. On signs, on buildings, on architecture, because they did have history in that community. And then, the third is the town of Mamikating, that's a future land use plan.
And, and that was a community that really wanted to take a different direction going forward in, as far as the past. They had always been chasing sort of traditional economic development, looking for, you know, warehousing and freight and, and other jobs that they couldn't compete necessarily with the region for. And they took a step back and they looked at what were the real resources they had that were unique in particular. And so, they kinda took a, a different approach and went with an ecotourism-based approach to their particular plan. And leaving really the traditional economic development only intact around their interchanges. It's a huge town, if you will, Mamikating, it's over a hundred square miles. So, it really is, is a different approach to economic development that they took.
So, that's essentially a, a kind of a summation and a summary of our proposal. From our perspective, in, in the end, I think you need to be comfortable with the consultant that you retain. And then, they have the, the qualities that you need to be able to put the plan together. The actual scope of services that we put together can be refined and will be refined based on what the town board finds to be the most important. This was, you know, our approach based on the request for proposal that went out prior to this board. So, you know, if, if the board wants further refinement or wants to focus more on one particular area versus another in terms of putting a plan together, we can cert- that's kind of the next stage. You select a consultant and then you refine and finalize the scope. I don't know where you are in the, the comprehensive plan committee's selection process.
So, we're gonna have interviews this evening.
Oh.
And, uh, we're not, sorry, sorry, sorry. We're gonna, we're gonna have an exec session to discuss and identify the individual we will interview. And we're gonna call a special audience to do the interviews. So, in, in a week's time, we should be there.
Okay. So, I don't know if you have any questions of us. I mean, we did have a budget attached to it, um, I think we were at, uh, we're under...
Ninety-two, six. You didn't play man-hours attached to it that I could find. Do you have a breakdown of about?
We do, because to put the budget together, we put man-hours together so we can certainly do that. If you feel that's something that you want.
And it's something I'd like to see possible. Just to compare the other two proposals, 18 months, your proposal?
Yeah, on your, on your sheet, on this, this graph, it shows 18 months. That was one of my questions too. Is that, is that valid or can we do it sooner?
You, you can do it sooner, so... Well, what we did was we had the committee meetings every month. If you have a committee that you can put together that has, again, bandwidth to do it, let's say, every two weeks, there is very much a way to telescope, to, to shorten that time period. And, you know, we're aware that the town is contemplating a moratorium. And so, once we start to, you know, use the M-word, then it becomes important to try and achieve this sooner than later. And so, you know, it's really, if that's what the town wants and you want to get the plan together sooner, then we can adjust the schedule to do that. You know, the comprehensive plan committee will just have to understand that, you know, every two weeks, they're gonna have to be meeting and really coming to decisions. And we'll have deliverables ready for them as we go through the process.
One, one just note to that is, as of January 1st of 2019, DEC did change the regulations with regard to seeker, requiring scoping for generic environmental impact statements. So, we used to be able to do the, a, a plan that served as its own generic environmental impact statement, which was a great way to save time. Now, you have to begin the environmental review when you have your draft plan. You have to do scoping, which is a 60-day process. You have to do a, a, a public hearing on, on the DGGIS. So, we just want you to be aware that, that while you can, you can shorten it, just the administrative procedures at the end take, you know, probably about three months.
And you, we are, I mean, there's not a choice. It has to go to the county, that's a 30-day time period. You know, there, there are just certain requirements and notices, et cetera. But the actual putting of the plan together itself, that can be condensed.
And our 18-month was from initiation to adoption.
Adoption by the town board?
Yes.
Not the other?
Yes.
So, the, the recommendation from the steering committee to the town board would happen?
They have their own public hearing as well?
Yes.
And after that, goes to the town, town has their own public hearing?
Exactly. Yep. Because they have to recommend to you. How many people do you recommend of a comprehensive plan committee? Our experience, so, you know, we've seen them as small as five. We've seen, I personally have seen them as large as 13. I think that at some point, if you, if you wanna get consensus, you know, nine to 11 seems to be kind of the sweet spot. So, seven might be, again, depending on if you wanna have representation from the villages, a planning board member, a ZPA member, a town board member.
Yeah, gets, gets quick.
Right there, boom, you're six. So, you know, I would say nine to 11. And, you know, they have to set up the rules.
More than 15, it, it becomes a little bit counterproductive too. Because what we've, we've had a couple of big committees and what we find is that people just stop coming because they feel they're not getting heard.
Sure.
So, you referenced before about, um, working with Orange County Planning and, and their data sets, which is specifically why I asked you the GIS question. I've worked with GIS, I understand a little bit of how that works. It's been a little while, so I might never get it.
We'll have to do the math.
Sounds good. So, we do have the water and sewer maps. We have that capability within our town.
The districts, yes.
And we have all the water and sewer lines mapped.
Great.
So, it, since, if we can provide that service, would you guys be willing to offset your total price? Or how would that work with your firm?
Or the county did it?
We provided that to you guys rather than, and that's just one example.
It helps, it helps, um, it becomes more efficient to do it that way. The, the, the mapping information that we get from the county, they give us the lot information and then we marry it to your assessment roll. And marrying it to the assessment roll allows us to be able to, for instance, find, let's say, clusters of land that are owned by the same person, public versus private, you know, what's in public ownership, the land use classification codes, so we can make a land use map that's up to date and accurate, which we then overlay the zoning on top of to see what's conforming and what's not conforming and where development is relative to each zoning district. The one thing that's important that I wanted to mention, which is both part of the secret process and what we do with the GIS information, is we actually do a development build-out analysis.
That was my next question.
Yep. So, you know, we wanna know today, based on the zoning, if the, and based on the regulations, and, you know, we, we make reasonable assumptions, if there was a build-out of the town, how much development would it result in? Because you then wanna compare that to ultimately the direction you go with your comprehensive plan. And you wanna find out, are we proposing more? Are we proposing less? Is it a shift from residential to non-residential or non-residential to residential? Because those have implications, fiscal implications.
Sure.
So, you know, the, the population size, traffic. There's, there's a whole host of information that you will get from having done a development potential analysis. And I think that's important to then know what direction you're heading in.
Sure, so...
I just have one last question.
I just wanna follow up on that one real quick. So, I think hidden in one of her, were questions, and I'm not sure if I heard an answer, was if we were to... Because if we're talking about man-hours and it's broken down, if we were able to take a certain section out and there were man-hours accounted for in your budget for that, would that lower your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my last question is if we could get a list of references that we would be able to go on?
Sure.
You guys are in there, right?
References, I missed that.
Yeah, so, we have various, yeah, our project sheets have contact.
Okay, that's what I was specifically like, if there were certain ones that we were not allowed to contact or allowed to contact.
No, all of them there, you're allowed to contact.
Well, some people want certain ones.
No, just in order to be, uh, important. So, for you guys, it's Monticello, Fallsburg, Mamikating, Maybrook, Monroe, Woodbury, Tuxedo, South Blingrove, Blingrove, Stony Point, Havestra, Carmel, Kipsey, Kingston. I mean, that's a lot of local towns.
Yeah. Yep. And we, um, again, if you look at the proposal, we have our little project blurbs and project sheets, what we call it. They have the name of a contact person and a phone number or an email. And if there's, if there, in those blurbs, if there's, if you wanna reach out to someone else, then just let us know.
Might give us a cheat sheet I could kinda send around with some of the contacts?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Make it all easier for us?
Yes, absolutely.
I have one question. Don't take offense to this question, but you mentioned that you manipulate the data?
Yes.
I'm old school.
Okay, the word manipulate?
When I hear people say they're manipulating the data, it's sending me a bad message. Can you clarify a little bit?
I, I'll give you an example right away, because we talked about the land use map. So, Orange County will give us a GIS shapefile, it's called. And it's basically a tax map. And each tax lot in the town is attached to a section block and lot number. But the, that shapefile may have been created five, 10 years ago. So, what we do is we take your most recent tax roll and we connect it. And when that happens, you'll see there's gaps because there may have been a subdivision. So, an old tax, the, the map has a, a, a large lot and the tax roll has several 10 different lots there and they're not meeting. So, we have to manipulate that meaning. We have to either put that information, you know, sketch out the lots or identify it as, as a lot that had been subdivided. That's what we mean. We mean updating it with the best available information. We don't change information.
Right. We take the information and then, again, so for instance, the accident data. We could either just map raw accident data or we can, and again, I use the word manipulate, we can categorize them and say which ones were vehicular accidents, which ones were bicycle and pedestrian. So, instead of just showing an accident map, we can actually break them out into dif- into different categories. So, that's what we mean by that, that verb.
Sydney?
Yeah, I just have one question. The website is very important to keep the community involved. Is that website on us to keep going? Do you put up a website and we link it?
We could do both, either or. Yep.
If you guys have a, a good infrastructure here to maintain a website, it's actually our preference that the, the town would do it. But we worked where we've actually designed and provided webpages to the community. And we've done it where we've hosted it on our web server and linked, provided a link from the town website to our...
We definitely just want it, we want the town residents, when they go to the town webpage, to definitely have either a webpage for itself or a link to our webpage. You know, but that, but that's visible on your page because that's, you know, where they typically go to get their information.
And, and typically also an email address. Because people who are looking through the information, they might just wanna send a letter or they send their tips in. So, you wanna have an email address that usually is like plan@, and then that will auto-direct to your chairman or your committee or whoever it might be that you want to be the point of contact there.
You can also do things like, I mean, we could get very technical, you know, QR codes. We can have, we can hand out flyers, we can do posters, we can put them in different areas. You know, if anybody has those scanners, with the phone, the QR codes, you know, so where they scan it and then suddenly the webpage comes up. So, you know, we can get advanced with this to connect people to the information about how...
One, one thing that sometimes communities find important is branding the plan to generate interest. I don't know if that's something that you'd be interested in. But coming up with a logo and sort of figuring out how you're gonna advertise, putting up banners around the community to drive up interest, those type of things also works well. And that works well with the QR code because you can actually print business cards with the QR code and the comprehensive plan brand.
The logo, yeah.
And leave them in restaurants and leave them around town.
How often do you access QR codes?
Actually, I went through movies yesterday with my parents. He picked out his phone. It's anybody's kids, 1917 is very, very, very dope.
Who knows the... I have a question, but anybody else, Cherry? All right, just out of curiosity, for online surveys, how do you verify the data for an online survey? How does that work?
So, there are different ways that you can disseminate the survey. I could tell you that in the village of Hillburn, they only wanted people from the village of Hillburn responding. So, they handed out, they sent out flyers with numbers. So, you had to put the number in to be able to access the survey. And they sent it out with a tax bill. So, that ensured that it was just going to people within, within the town.
Okay. That's interesting. How do you verify?
They have water, water bills a lot of times.
Okay.
You know, otherwise in the survey, we, um, we can, we actually ask, are you a town or you... But, you know, if you're concerned about people doing it legitimately and really being residents or really being employees or whomever you're going to ask, you know, there's, there's ways we can tell if someone's gaming the system.
Without maybe letting up some of those secrets. When, when you take a survey, the survey company that you're using is recording more information than you may know. So, there's some ways to look at the, the surveys and see...
The IP addresses.
Yeah, the IP addresses, for example. And if, if you get the same IP address, a block of that...
Like 60 of them, then we know.
Thank you.
You'll call the iceboard students and just...
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Any, any of the households. Because we want, we don't want it to be limited to one person, you know, per household. People, you know, kids, teens, their wants and needs can be very different from, you know, from adult needs. Um, and certainly as a focus group, um, you know, there are focus groups where you can go to the school, and even just, you have a little group with the, with the school district and the kids, you know.
Yeah, we actually set up, uh, in that plan, we set up, uh, one of our, we did six public outreach meetings, one of them, uh, we had, uh, the, um, they have a community center, like a youth program, uh, in the village, we had him keep, uh, or, or send out a, a request to the parents to be able to keep the kids in the community center, because we were having a meeting that night, and, uh, the parents that agreed, we had like thirty or forty kids that were there for after-school program that just stayed and gave us great information at the town plan meeting.
All right. Well, listen, forty, forty-five minutes or so for each presentation, I think we're a little over time, but I think it was well worth it.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks so much for your time, we will be in touch.
Thank you for inviting us back.
Of course.
We appreciate it.
Of course, we're looking forward to talking with you guys soon.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, we will not take a recess, 'cause we have a lot to do. Uh, we are gonna go straight into our agenda. Now, before I go forward with the agenda, there are some edits to the agenda, and Stephanie needs to correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we found out a couple hours before the meeting, uh, that there was a public hearing in November, um, that was left open until the second meeting in January.
Without a date certain.
Without a date certain. Uh, so item M on our agenda will be for Medline, uh, setting a date of Thursday, February twentieth, to continue, the continuance of public hearing, the extension of water and sewer, uh, for Medline. So that's just gonna be something we, we act on. Uh, no one is ready here to, to support a public hearing, there hasn't been enough notice, in my opinion, to really let people know.
No, we're gonna renotice it.
Yeah, so we'll renotice it, um, just as a point of, uh, interest for the, for the agenda. And then we also left off the, uh, payment of the audited bills, which is gonna go under, uh, right before Good and Welfare. Um, so technically it would be Roman numeral seven, and Good and Welfare would become Roman numeral eight, and the German would become Roman numeral nine. And those are the two items. Uh, so do I need a motion to add those to the agenda? Make those edits? No? Okay, just for the purpose of public, so you know what's going on. And moving forward right now, uh, we will have public comment on business of the board, same thing as the last time, if you're not here, uh, we provide you an opportunity to literally have a seat at the table. Uh, so you'll take a seat right here, uh, one thing that I did get was some feedback from the last time, uh, so we're gonna actually have town residents first, and when I say town residents, you can be from any of the villages as well. So we'll take all the public comment from town residents first, after town residents have had a chance to speak and provide input just on the, uh, agenda items, business of the board. Um, then we'll also allow for property owners, business owners, and anyone else who, uh, will say a few words or have a comment. Again, this public comment for our work session is meant to be collaborative, it's meant to focus on these items, um, so we're happy to have your feedback, but I will try to rein in if it gets a little too long. If you have a statement you'd like to read, if you could summarize and then submit for the record, we'd appreciate, save on time, and give everybody an opportunity to speak. Uh, so without further ado, for town residents first, uh, do I have a first acre other than Don?
Come on.
Go ahead, Don, come on.
I loosen everybody up.
Yeah, I agree.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Okay, I guess I'm here to talk about the moratorium, and, uh, a few things, um, you know, I briefly talked, uh, the other day, or last week, about this moratorium here before this board, and, uh, the pressures that you guys are under. And, uh, again, I see this past week, those pressures, uh, being highlighted again. And without outside concerns, putting in your two cents of what we wanna do around our town. Uh, that doesn't sit well with me. Uh, you had our county executive, uh, yesterday come out with comments comparing Amazon and Stewart, and that they go hand in hand. Uh, and then you have this, uh, thing with this IDA meeting tomorrow that, to me, is a, uh, a, a, a really, 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 uh, dishonorable thing to, to do to the town residents, to have such a short meeting, when down the road, ten days from now, we have a public hearing, and that issue could've been brought up at that public hearing, and to have it at one o'clock tomorrow when this town hall is closed, doesn't sit well. I, I don't, I just don't understand what people are thinking about. So when we come down to the moratorium, I talked about the time element that we have here. We have a real problem with time. And I think, uh, the resolution that, uh, you folks have been talking about, uh, I guess you're gonna talk about it a little bit, uh, later here, once you get to your agenda item, uh, what I really wanted to, uh, say to that, uh, resolution, I believe you folks cannot walk away from this table tonight without an agreement between all of you to move this resolution forward. You cannot put it off to your next meeting, it has to be done tonight. We've been asking for a long time, today's the day. Come up with a resolution, whatever it might be, that is workable for your concerns, Ron, Cindy, Cherry, and just get moving on it. I think what you came up with, uh, last, uh, last week, and a little bit of a couple tweaks, it can be worked out, but we need to move it forward. We can't hold on to this. Um, it was very interesting to listen to the LeBurgers' group's comments, and I'm sure everybody heard it. They talked about distribution centers and, uh, manufacturing, and how these young kids in our town weren't very interested in things like that. They were more interested in high-tech. Guess what, folks? We've been telling that, the, this board, for over a year. And now you hear a planner come in and tell you, maybe you need to stop listening to them. These kids here do not want distribution center jobs. They want high-tech jobs, they want that eighty thousand dollar job. The other thing I found interesting, how he glorified that corridor down row four sixteen, what do you think about that? Wasn't that something? And what do you guys wanna do, or what does certain entities in this community, or a county wanna do? They wanna ruin that for us. That's ours.
I'm not sure if you realize that was where Medline is proposed.
I'm, I'm sure he wasn't, but I think you, your ears had the perk when that was brought up. I wanna read a quote to you folks, if I can find it, um, from Supervisor Meyer in Windsor, and I'm sure you all seen it, it's been in the headlines for the past couple days. "I understand the developer, developers' anxiety, but I'm in the business for protecting our residents." You know what, folks? That's your job too. Protect your residents, not the developers. We don't care about that. My final point, to ease some of the concerns that outside groups brought to this table last week, everybody was concerned about jobs. That if we put a moratorium, we're gonna loo, not, not have jobs, our electricians, our plumbers, all of a sudden won't have jobs, they won't be working. Have you all looked at what the village of Montgomery is doing right now? Have you all looked at your planning board is doing, other than these man, uh, these, uh, distribution centers? There's plenty of jobs. And I would say, how about everybody go up and down the Neely Town Road and fill those jobs first? How about that? Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Go ahead, Beverly.
Okay, I gotta read this to you, 'cause I just can't summarize it without stumping.
Okay.
All right. I've been watching pieces of the town of Montgomery, and all of Orange County get plowed under, disguised with names like industry, commerce, advancement. They're plowed under, they're cut down, and they're discarding all the natural flora, the fauna, as well as the native, native animals and the habitats. There's none of it left. And you know, we're killing ourselves when we kill our ecosystems? Really? How do we expect those habitats to recreate themselves in a different location? Well, you have Medline and Sailfish, and then you have at least twenty other warehouses trying to be built in the town of Montgomery. Right next door, in the town of Hamptonburg, they're looking at ten large warehouses, and it's all along the same corridor, the Neely Town Corridor, the four sixteen corridor. There is no, and of course, there's no way that we can forget what's happening over in the ocean with Legoland. In the town of Wockhill, you have no space left, because every vacant spot is being filled with, uh, lodging and eateries. And then the, at the bottom of it all, you've got Woodbury Commons. Traffic, traffic, chaos. What we need to do is we need to take a step back. We need to take a minute, and we need to take all of this into consideration. I was thinking, how can we do this? It's time we put an added measure of protection in place. I propose, at the very least, for the town of Montgomery, if not the entire county of Orange, that every proposed commercial project be subject to a disturbed earth policy. Simply put, industry cannot simply be built on a plot of land any longer, just because some partnerships and some landowners decide it's okay to do it. Why not change the zoning laws and make sure that industry sites should and must be built on sites that have already been disturbed for commercial concerns? We should have separate zoning laws for agriculture, ensuring that the farmland is protected, and that what is available for sale should also be given green and eco-friendly concerns, and, and, um, only those to help save the green areas and the ecosystems. This is a kind of development, in my opinion, that's smart development. It provides for development now, but it still looks to the future and gives hope to the residents. I dare say that, in my opinion, projects like this type are worthy of our tax dollars being suspended in the form of pilots, not projects being built by billionaires. Thank you.
Thanks, Beverly. Just real quick, uh, in terms of agricultural zoning, I will tell you, an overwhelming majority of our town is zoned for agriculture and slash residential, so that is something, and, and, just as a point.
Okay, 'cause I, I've seen a lot on zoning maps, and it's also IB, you also have, uh,
We do, it's.
industrial and agricultural.
I don't, I don't believe that we actually have an individual zoning code that is just for agriculture.
Right, it's, it's.
It's agriculture and, and residential agriculture and.
Zone.
So you would just.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for comments. Okay, any other town residents? First. Yes, Mr. Joe Keenan, esteemed chairman of the Ethics Board.
And resident in Coldenham.
In Coldenham. And you're with the Department of Public Safety.
Coldenham, thank you.
Yes, please.
So, um, I know it's early, and you, you just, uh, basically interviewed in public the two planning agencies, and you're talking about people on the comprehensive plan.
Yep.
And one thing I would like you to remember is Coldenham, it's not a village, and everybody's talking about, well, if we do these outreach, we're gonna be meeting in the villages, the villages, and the town. Coldenham has a hamlet, it still has an identity, yeah, it's part of town, but it has an identity, and, and people there, um, would welcome some love.
Good point.
We use the park.
And, and I know the chairman board there, they can arrange that.
That's a really good point, thanks, Joe.
So I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Presenter should've done more research about Coldenham, right? They did this earlier. All right, uh, other town residents? Yes, sir, come on up. And sorry, I keep naming people for the purpose of terror in the minutes, if you could state your name and address, Stephen?
Residents.
Hi, my name's John Kitchman, seventy-five, rural area of Montgomery. I'd like to request the board postpone or table, uh, any, any actions on three of the items in tonight's agenda. They all relate to, uh, Project Sailfish. Uh, this IDA meeting that was quickly called for tomorrow is, from what I understand, is to, uh, deal with a, uh, a change in their pilot request. I think based on that, uh, you really can't take any actions on, on anything related to Sailfish. There was a representative from Amazon here several weeks ago at the planning board meeting, I think, and when he was questioned as to what they would do if they did not receive a pilot, his answer was they would not build. Until you get a definitive answer from Amazon as to whether they're gonna be the tenant, I don't see how you can make any decisions on anything related to that project.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, Stephanie, they are, they have been revealed as the tenant, but is it, it's pending specific approval still, or they, they pretty much were announced?
Um, we could ask, Dave Everett is here, if he wants to clarify that they're attorney, I don't, I'm not.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, they've revealed themselves as the tenant, yeah.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So what was your, what was your question, or what was your statement in the beginning, was just that you wanted them to reveal as the tenant before we acted on those three items, or wait until after the IDA made their approval?
I don't think, from Amazon's statement that they wouldn't, that they would not come here unless they had the pilot approval, you don't know that Amazon, you don't know who the final tenant is.
Okay.
I think it's hard to make a decision, Sailfish is making these requests based on the fact that Amazon's gonna be their tenant.
Okay.
Amazon's saying, if I don't get this, I'm not coming.
I'm not, is it Amazon, or is it, um, Sailfish, or USEF? 'Cause there's like three companies in this.
According to the agenda, Sailfish is the one that, that's making requests.
We'll get to that and the specifics, and we're gonna speak to those items, but thank you for your comments. All right, any other town residents? All right, any other business owners or anyone else would like to state whose, Barbara?
Thank you for giving me a seat at the table. Pretty unusual. Um, my issues also address the, primarily those three agenda items dealing with Sailfish. Should I have a written statement that I will turn to you, Tal? Um, there are now two lawsuits challenging the Sailfish project, one alleging improper zoning for about half of the project site, and a second alleging a failure to properly consider the full environmental impacts associated with this project, in addition to the socioeconomic and traffic impacts, in other words, the cumulative impact required by CEPR. Each lawsuit could result in town approvals being annulled and vacated. The project cannot move forward if the current approvals are annulled. The town failed to consider the actual zoning for the site and how the project would harm the town's ability to develop that area in accordance with the correct zoning, the IB. You and the new plan, uh, new board members were elected in part as a result of opposition to this project. You're presently deciding on a planner to help create a new master plan and update our zoning to better guide us into the future development and growth for the entire town of Montgomery, an issue that was clearly important to voters. The same issues apply to the socioeconomic and environmental impacts from site runoff, wastewater treatment plant emptying into the Tin Brook, air pollution, and other impacts from increased traffic, and the loss of a wildlife habitat. The town board and the town IDA should not be making any commitment and spending time on a project that may be annulled in the court. This is a waste of taxpayer money and effort. The town is presumably also spending taxpayer funds to defend a project that was based on often incorrect or incomplete information to the IDA and their application to the FBIIS from the applicant. The town board is charged with the control of town finances, that is part of New York State law, section sixty-four point one, and should reasonably act as a fiduciary of taxpayer money in this instance. This project took about a year for review, a review that overlooked clear issues, such as the actual zoning. There is no harm in taking a few more months to ensure that all pertinent issues are fully considered. The town board is undertaking the effort to impose a moratorium to fully review and update the comprehensive plan and zoning. Along with Medline, this large-scale project is the reason for that, and moving for, this project forward in light of the current town efforts will severely undermine the entire purpose of updating the comprehensive plan and zoning code to reflect the town's current and future goals and plans. I ask that the town board make no decision on any issue, or even consider any issue regarding the Sailfish project, also known as Amazon, until after these two lawsuits are settled. I hope they encourage the IDA to do the same, really. Let this be done in an efficient. Let this be done in an efficient manner and leave this to follow the judicial process. Let the court decide these two legal issues before spending both time and money on a decision that might well be overturned.
Thank you. Any other comments before we get to, yes, sir?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Richard, West Track, four, six, five, Statement Seventeen K. How do you speak into this?
Just step back, you're good, yeah.
Just like you're talking to us.
All right. I would request an ethics investigation on the September eighteenth letter that Walt sent to Bluewater three, almost four months prior to the January seventh public meeting. He made a commitment to take over that sewer plant, which I don't think he had the authority to do alone. And we're living with that letter now and that commitment. And I'm sure that Bluewater has it in their safe. And we need to do something about that, we need to rescind, take back that letter. And it needs to be done by the town board.
All right, we're gonna look into that.
Okay.
Do we have the power to do that, or is that you as supervisor?
We're gonna look into it, yeah, actually, we met this morning and he informed me about the letter. So we're looking into it since it has to do with...
Employee personnel.
Correct.
Yes.
We're, I'm looking into it. Megan and I had the meeting this morning about it. Thank you, sir.
Because for the record, we never agreed on that or discussed it, so we're not...
So, one, and there's viewing that letter, one, I haven't seen it yet. So seeing the letter and then seeing the secret document and then using our counsel to say what's binding, what's not, and what action should we take. I haven't seen the letter yet, though, so I want to see that first. All right, anything else? Yes, Sherry.
Good evening, Board, Sherry Zuckus, Town of Montgomery. Just a really quick point. I'd like to second on bird urgency. I think it's a critical point in our time. I'd also like to point out that the warehouse is both the Sailfish that is being considered and other warehouses. When they talk about the demonstration of the number of the jobs and the quality of jobs, I'd like to state that when I lost my job, unemployment in New York State requires you to travel an hour in your own car and an hour and a half by public transportation. When you examine Montgomery and in a corporate, excuse me, a web search such as Indeed and you look about jobs that are equivalent to the jobs that are being offered in these corporations that are coming forward, you will find that within twenty-five miles, there is well over two thousand five hundred. If you open it up further, there is well over three thousand five hundred jobs, both full and part-time, at the equivalency of what they're offering. So as far as work, it's not unique. And as far as unemployment and the people in the town, in villages, in part of the consideration of what is a concern here about not going forward with these, I would just like to state that in accordance to the time and Harold Record, they have done multiple articles on the boom in the area. So I think while we have this moratorium, I think that the effects to our residents, which are hard and we want to keep employed, I think there is work to carry them. And if there isn't the work to carry them, then one of the things is perhaps they need to examine their business rubic or their quality. Because right now, it's a very dynamic time. Unemployment is at the lowest point almost in how many years? So I just wanted to bring some of those points forward about the rate of pay in these warehouses as we go forward to evaluate them. I understand there are construction jobs, but we also have talked about this, that two years of their good being is the rest of our lives here as a town and where we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. We're all friendly here.
Hello. Beth Hefner, Town of Montgomery. I would like to third the push for a moratorium to beg you to look at the environment, think of covering up the watershed, think of algae blooms, think of flooding. We've all seen how the walk yield can go when there's a storm. Protect our farmland, don't kill the flora and fauna that are out there. Save it for our children and our grandchildren. And please, do a moratorium. Thank you.
Any other public comment before we dive into our agenda? All right, thank you all very much. Our first item on the agenda is the moratorium. We have in front of you a draft, a very, very rough draft that we are going to provide feedback on. I'm gonna go through each section one by one. Stephanie, do you mind if I just kind of jump in, or do you have any comments?
I'm just here to listen and know the board.
Sounds good, as we provide feedback. So the title, obviously, this local law shall be referred to. It's establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications for the development of warehouses and distribution centers in the town of Montgomery. Very important legislative findings, purpose and intent. Also, distribution center is defined means facility used for receipt, temporary storage, and redistribution of goods. A distribution center may be attached to or accessory to an office, industrial building, or use warehouse or commercial use. And then warehouse definition in this law is the warehouse definition defined in the Town of Montgomery Code, section thirty dash twenty. So the section three legislative findings, purpose and intent. The town will hereby find that many economic and social impacts and trends have changed since the town's last review of its comprehensive plan in two thousand and ten. Therefore, the town board hereby finds that there is a critical and compelling need in the public interest as set forth herein to impose a moratorium on the review and approval of applications for the construction and development of warehouses and distribution centers in the town. It goes on to talk about specific wording that I'll allow you guys to give feedback to, to our attorney. If you have any questions on it right now, please just let me know. It's pretty standard and it's in line with some of our comments made, so take a minute, take a read, and then I'll move on to the next section if there's no comments on it. Go ahead.
All warehouses and distribution centers or zero square feet that...
Very, very good question. Stephanie, can you speak to the fact that you and Will were unable to really draft as something that was specific to one hundred thousand square feet warehouses?
So the reason, and that goes back to...
Back it up a little bit.
That goes back to comments that were received from the planning board attorney and the planning board planner. Their particular, and me and Will...
Push it down, push it down. Thanks, Millie.
So me and Will ultimately agreed because the thinking behind that was a warehouse that's a hundred thousand square feet, sure, might have, you know, a certain type of impact, but one that's smaller in your residential area might also have an impact that the town wants to reconsider and relook at. So it would be more, more broadened based upon, because of the location type.
All right. And I hope you guys don't mind, but I wanted to allow for the purpose of moving this along, and I know that there's definitely a push for that. I wanted to get the feedback from the planning board and a couple of other consultants. So I did send them some of our feedback and asked them to provide our attorney's feedback as they were drafting it. So I hope you don't mind me doing that. I know a portion of this is that this is geared towards a comprehensive plan process being established. Can you speak to how quickly we are able to move this along before we've established our comprehensive plan committee? Is there a threshold we need to meet?
Well, it's a local law, so we'll have to introduce it, we'll have to have a public hearing on it, you know, have to do CEQA on it. So that, right there is a time period. I mean, we can't enough to, we can't pass this tonight, we can't pass this even, you know, in a week or so. So that's the timeframe for the moratorium in general. In terms of being, and the purpose of it is because we're, you all are considering updates to the comprehensive plan, so I would keep it in line with that and...
My specific question would be, could we even set a date for a public hearing before we have established a comprehensive plan committee? That's my question.
Yeah, because we can amend it. We can either amend it or we can do the public hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we could do the public hearing in concert of us working on this because the public hearing just allows the public really to comment on it. But we could keep working on it because we would take into account the comments that we receive forward.
You don't have to, you don't have to, there's no requirement that you must set a committee in order to...
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, and, go ahead.
The last letter we got from your attorney, Will, said that it's highly, highly recommended that the comprehensive plan committee be set up before the moratorium.
I think we were saying the same things. I think the question was, can we set a public hearing before we've established it? And I think the answer was yes, we just, like we just said, we couldn't, we couldn't pass it.
And I'll tell you, the purpose, the purpose behind that is because it's been found that in past, you have to, in order for your moratorium to be upheld is the basis that you need to be actively taking steps towards a comprehensive plan or updating zoning. So a way of establishing that, you know, kind of definitively is by setting that comprehensive plan committee. But it's not a requirement, it is, it is a recommendation and certainly a public hearing. Like you were saying, Councilwoman Brown, it's in concert with each other.
If you have a public hearing, you don't actually have to adopt it.
Correct.
Does the document have to be ready for the public to see in order to...
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Yes, that has to happen first.
Right, that's what we're doing right now.
Without a lot of changes.
Right, because then you would have to renotice it and have it...
Correct.
Yes.
I think I would like to make a recommendation that we do it for you. Because neither one of those comprehensive planners are looking at under a year.
So let me just go back to my original point. We can, having a six-month moratorium doesn't prohibit us from having a moratorium for a year and then a second extension for three months or six months.
Even don't we have to have another public hearing?
Yes, and then I think...
I think myself, we're working on the comprehensive plan that this should be just...
So hear, so hear me out, right? So we've heard a lot of potential damaging things that could come from a moratorium and we don't know, right? We're gonna do our research, we're gonna do everything we can. And for the purpose of not knowing what could potentially happen, if those things actually do happen, it allows us an opportunity to, you know, and I think there is also, to your point, there is language that's gonna be at the end of this that allows us severability. If any part or provision of this local law or the application thereof to any person or circumstance be a judge, no, that's not it. I was looking for language that was in our residential moratorium back in the early two thousands that basically said if there was an issue, there was an out in terms of getting out of the moratorium if it was bound to be in detriment to the general public.
I can take a look at that if you want me to.
Okay, I have two things for you to take a look at, too, that I just thought of is, first off, what would it cost us? We did the six month. It's gonna cost us more fees to hire you guys, to pay you guys, to renotice it, to do the legal fees, to... What is that cost? And does that cost outweigh us putting it out to a year? And the second question is, how long, how many times can we extend it? Is there a statute that says you can only extend it for three months, six months, nine months? Is there any statute that specifies?
It's not, it's not a statute, but there is case law that holds, you know, after, after a year, it starts getting murky in terms of the reasonability, the reasonable factor and really working towards that, so...
I'm sorry, let me clarify. Certain, certain moratoriums that were provided to us had three, three-month timeframes. Other ones had six-month timeframes. Is there any statute that says after we do a six-month or after we do a year, you can only do a three-month or you can only do a six-month? There's no restriction on that?
It's not that there, it's not that, it's a steadfast restriction. The fact is that you need to make it as least restrictive as possible. You can't, it has to be, if you think it's only gonna take six months or three months, it has to be that amount. You can't, you shouldn't be providing yourself a push in as to restrict, you know, property developments and everything like that more than it needs to be.
And Sherry's got a very valid point.
It's the balance that you need to be considering.
Does not want over a year.
Right.
But if we do it for a year, that's what you're saying, right? Is that both plant, both groups at least a year?
Let me go back to my reasoning, okay? And it's, it can be specific, it could be completely general. While we do this, we need to take into account, and I don't think we've done this yet, what the potential impacts could be because of the smaller businesses that feed off some of the larger warehouses and distribution facilities and what that, what the impact will make to our economy. I'm not saying we need to have a formula, I'm not saying that we need to have an exact idea on what it's going to look like, but we just need to be mindful and be thorough as part of this discussion. In my mind, having a six-month and extending it for six months gives us more options in case there are some issues that come up that we're not thinking about. It allows us some flexibility. I don't think we're gonna get through this comp plan in six months. But again, it allows us a window, and I do think the fees would be minimal compared to, I don't know, things that I'm not thinking of that potentially could be a hardship for our community. And that's why I would caution us and do it in six months as opposed to just starting out and saying, let's do it for a year. That's just my piece, I don't know how you guys feel.
Again, I'm gonna quote the letter from a lawyer. There's five basic requirements for land use moratorium. Two of five states have a reasonable timeframe as measured by the action to be accomplished during the term. Six months is not a reasonable time to look at a comprehensive plan. Number five says, have a time certain when the moratorium will expire. Very clear, and it's, he's referencing land use moratorium, New York State Department of State. And I know this is not a law, and I know it's not written in stone, but this is the recommendation from our lawyer to us.
So what's yours?
I wanted to go a year, but I don't wanna spend extra money.
Right, I mean, like, we could, we could take that money and put it...
I don't know, I understand what Brian's saying.
I'll just, I'll just like logistically speaking, because I, you know, you all know I'm drafting the laws. So when I do an extension, that's very minimal compared to this one. So the amount of time that I'm gonna put into doing an extension is really just...
Yeah, but the money...
We can see here six months and I don't do the same.
Definitely four months, four months.
So, and not only that, we're gonna have to look into how much money, I mean, granted, I get that you're saying it's not gonna be much money, but we're gonna need to also look into how much money is it gonna cost us to update the zoning? We're looking at comp plan, we're gonna try to run the zoning at the same time. That's another point I'm gonna get down to later is there's gonna be extra fees that we're not associating with this.
I'm happy to do whatever the board wants, I'm not...
All right, let's, let's go down the line, let's go down the line real quick. Sherry, what do you think?
I also have...
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
I also have a letter suggesting that we should maybe possibly exempt, like, Millington Road and Stone Castle Road.
You're talking about geographical, like, putting a moratorium based on?
I don't think that...
Go ahead, Ron. Line it.
In addition, the application of the moratorium cannot be piecemealed, meaning that it applies to all or none.
He's been good, Ron's been on it.
This is not written in stone.
No, 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 it's not, and again, this is just stuff that was sent in our memo. This is not the law, you're citing the memo that was sent.
It is best practice to exempt all pending non-approved applications from the moratorium. Everything that's in process, best practice is to legally process.
So because Will's not here, we just might need a point of clarification for that specific line. Best practice, but also weigh the risk of what it would take. Have there, have there been moratoriums that were specific to a certain area? And I think what Sherry's saying is, if we went through our entire comp plan, you know, process, and there's an understanding that...
I mean, I myself don't think that those areas are gonna change. You know, like Millington Road and Stone Castle Road.
That Sherry's trying to make.
The point here is, quote, "Before, in addition, the application should not be piecemealed. Allow pending applications to be considered outside the moratorium will significantly reduce the risk of litigation."
Well, that speaks to like a process in the law, which we're gonna have. That speaks to having an opportunity to plead their case to be exempted from the moratorium. That's in any moratorium law that's drafted in there.
But I would be a little nervous excluding Millington Road. First off, because I feel like you're segregating out the piece of the town versus saying that the town as a whole. First off, because I feel like you're segregating out the piece of the town versus saying that the town as a whole. But second off, you know, Neely Town Road does have residential backing right to it with the Village of Maybrook. So there are houses with constituents in that area that the, the projects are directly affecting them, which is why we're looking at updating the, the comprehensive plan and the zoning. I mean, that was gonna be one of my, my points coming up is, and that was in the, I think that was in the criteria for moratorium memo that I sent you guys, but looking at saying, you know, especially, especially projects that were, are within a hundred, a thousand feet from residences. Because the, the, these industrials places are now, are so directly affecting our residents that Neely Town Road does have that. And I, I, I looked, I, I apologize, but I just have to get on this one quick rant. Looking at the town of Warwick actually has like bands around their villages and that was gonna be a recommendation in the comprehensive plan should we get there is trying to create a buffer between the industrial and the residential. But that specific wording wouldn't work.
For a moratorium law?
Yes.
Right, that's part of the comprehensive plan.
I get that, but that's where I was going with the.
No, I agree. And there's gonna be a line somewhere, right? Like, it's gonna exist. There's gonna be a line where there's residential abutting or something else abutting industry. There's gonna be a line. So it's gonna exist somewhere. And then, yeah, I mean, that's just reality.
But not Neely Town today. I mean.
But there is open spots on Neely Town Road.
There is.
Cause I went by it today. I think there was like a sixteen-three acre lot.
I can't see how you can pull over.
What else would go there, right?
Change somebody, what?
All right, so I have geography as something that Will's gonna look into. Uh, to, to Ron's point, is it best practice? Obviously, it's best practice, but how?
Yeah, so the, so the thinking behind that is that ultimately your purpose, you have to always look at your legislative purpose, right? So your purpose here is your comprehensive plan. That is townwide. So when you take that as your purpose and as your basis and you apply it to the law and what you're doing here, the moratorium, the moratorium would also be townwide. So it's that, you're right. That's where that comes from.
And also, Sherry, to, to your point, any moratorium's gonna have an, an application process for exemption that allows a business in Neely Town Road to come to us and say, hey, consult with your comp plan committee or whatever, and we would, we would be able to determine and exempt them without putting it into our law.
And one other.
So that might, that might speak to your, your issue right there.
Well, I would hope that we'd get our wastewater treatment plant fixed first. Cause I don't know that they have room on Neely Town Road.
That's February sixth. I couldn't fit everything tonight, okay? That presentation's February sixth.
It was, I just, I know it was looked at.
Today, yeah. Okay, all right, let's keep going. So we're still in section three. I think a lot of that was good. Uh, and I think we spoke to a lot of that. Obviously, it's, it speaks to our purpose that we need to do this based on our comprehensive plan and part of it is exactly what Stephanie said. Uh, the town board has begun the process of, one, retaining the services of a planning utility firm and, two, creating a plan committee to provide guidance and recommendations. So that's within this law, those, that wording.
But on section three, it says, town's last review of its comprehensive plan is two thousand and ten.
Correct, and that's accurate.
That's what we, not nineteen eighty-four, not two thousand and two.
The last, current, factually speaking, our last update was in two thousand and ten.
That was something it voted on and everything else.
Yeah.
Then why is it?
I don't know. That's a good question, Kristen. I can only, I only know what the law says. All right, so let me know if you guys have any comments for our attorney as they continue to draft this throughout the next, this meeting to the next one, uh, for section three, but I think it looks good. Um, section four, scope of controls. During the effective period of local law, no permit shall be issued for the permitting process, construction, installation, warehouse, distribution facilities in any districts within the town without the approval of the town board of the town of Montgomery, which approval will not be considered except in the event of proven hardship. Town planning board shall not accept any application or grant any approval to a subdivision plot, site plan, special use permit or other permit that includes the permitting and construction and or development of a warehouse or distribution center in any districts within the town or would have as a result of the enlargement, relocation or modification of an existing facility.
Is that, and are you gonna keep reading and I can ask questions?
Yes, ma'am. We'll do section by section.
Okay.
The towns, go ahead.
Warehouse or distribution, warehouse or distribution, are we, are we targeting? And obviously, we're targeting warehouse and distribution, but that goes back to.
I said that last time that we had to do all industrial.
Well, I'm not saying all industrial, it does go back to the lawyers. You gotta be careful.
The lawyer gave us a memo.
Line up. You can't have a tractor trail and make a right-hand turn going onto this road. You can't do that.
Our attorney gave us a memo on best practices. We explained to them what we were thinking and having one is to draft the law. And he's done, and Stephanie has done the best job they can to speak to our comments while staying true to the law. And that's where we are.
And that's gonna be, I guess.
We will all have to weigh that.
Having people here stopping, you know, trying to tell us to stop construction, we're gonna have the other lawsuits saying, you can't tell me you're targeting my warehouse.
That is why we have a process in place for hardship for them to appeal. And that is what helps protect us from litigation in this law.
No, that wasn't my point. My point was, I wanna build a warehouse and you're telling me I can't, but everybody else can build any other thing they want.
I understand what you're saying. And again, the, the opportunity to petition the town board is the first line of defense. If they try to sue us, well, where are you suing us on? We've given you an opportunity. You have not reached out and used that opportunity. And the idea is that.
They have to prove it's a hardship.
Correct. And that's why that protects us from litigation in the law. Well, that's, that's it. That's, that's why, that's our protection.
That's why I said a law, because that doesn't.
All right, let's keep it going. No, you can interrupt.
I wouldn't interrupt at the end. I just.
The town of Montgomery Building Apartments shall not accept any building permit application or grant any certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance for any warehouse or distribution center. Uh, okay, that's sections, go ahead, Kristen. Section four.
Okay.
That's the scope of controls.
Yes, so question, this does not stop the review, so, but in reading number one, to me, it does not stop the review of existing applications, but prevents any new applications or approvals. Is that correct?
That's how it reads.
Um, to me, I, I would put a stop on NEDEC or, I, I would put a stop in the planning board process specifically on a NEDEC declaration or, or even adoption of that D I S. I mean, there's gotta be a stop in the process versus just saying that everybody in the queue gets to keep going.
It's right here, actually, section five. So go to section five, the next section. Notwithstanding, it's a specific exemptions. Notwithstanding the foregoing, any warehouse or distribution center project that has received final approval from the town of Montgomery Planning Board as of February first, twenty twenty. And again, this will be edited based on.
Yeah, that's just.
Yeah.
Receiving final approval, so it's a definition of final approval.
Correct. Hereby is.
Conditional final approval, the resolution.
Hereby is exempt from the moratorium and may proceed with the usual permitting and licensing process. So there is, there is your outline.
So that means that they've gone through the whole process. They get the F E I S, they do the, the resolution.
The conditional final approval would be.
What would be next?
The planning board on what their recommendations is on that?
Not yet, no.
Fred Regal had mentioned to me about having a, at the NEDEC stage.
NEDEC?
Yeah. So we should reach out to them and see what their recommendations are and revisit this.
Okay.
This place.
All right, I got that one down.
Or even having the F E I S complete and a finding statement done. I would say that would be the stopping point. But, um, okay, so number two.
Meaning exempting projects that have received D I S or F E I S?
Receiving, anything that has done with the E I S, E I S, H, you're done. You're anything after, anything.
Before that.
Before that, yes, thank you.
That's what we said, that's, right, so the approvals are exempt, but everything that's in the process is not exempt.
And I, I just think maybe at least we've written in there more clearly as opposed to.
That would be in the, in the scope of controls.
That would be section five. Cause I.
That would, no, that would, that's where I'm getting at with.
With scope of controls.
Set number one, that could be more clearly defined. Number two, I think is in violation of secret, certain law.
Which one? Uh, oh, number two, okay, got it.
So for scope of controls, number two, saying that any, grant any application, any approvals to a subdivision plot, site plot, special use. To me, that says, in specifically within the town or would have a result of enlargement, relocation or modification to an existing facility, could that be in violation of secret, especially if they're gonna put on like a porch?
That's a good, that's a good question.
Or, or an outside eatery area? I mean, now we're just telling these people, well, if you have an existing warehouse and you wanna put a, I, I, an employee hangout. I mean, when I talked to Will specifically, he said a porch on a, on a secret question regarding my memo. So I was just wondering if that would be in violation of our secret law, the state's.
I mean, that's a good, that's a good point. But we're gonna bring that back to Will.
Yeah, I don't know why, uh, meaning it would apply to anybody that's trying to extend the facility.
Right.
Right, but it does, it says construction, it says anything. So it doesn't necessarily say, so it's, it could be a hangout place, it could be.
It should probably be just to, uh.
Yeah, it could be expanding.
To expand their warehouse.
Right, I guess the question is, how do we?
How do you define that?
Right.
Cause I'm, I'm not saying that they should be able to double the size of their warehouse while we're doing this.
That's the purpose of it, but it needs to be clarified.
Yes.
I got, I got.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm saying if they're putting a porch on or garage, you know, a one-car garage, I mean, there's so many, or an office, like.
And to be clear, you're okay with, you, if they're doing a one-car garage or a porch, you're okay with that, but specifically it could be a warehouse facility.
I, I.
I would look at the secret law and see what's defined in the type one and type two.
That just gets really tricky, so I would feel more comfortable with a little more feedback and clarification before, you know, that's, that's an important one.
Yeah, I mean, Will can reach out to me.
I don't even know how you write that, to be honest with you.
We talked about it. That's why if Will wants to reach out to me regarding that question.
We can talk.
Okay, that's dangerous. Uh, but a good point. Okay, uh, section six, term. The moratorium imposed by this local law shall be in effect for six months from the effective date. Let's revisit this one. Um, we're a little split here. I've raised my points, my concerns. I, I think the, the potential time and, and money is negligible in terms of the potential protections it could, it give us. Should we have, you know, the sky is falling, like, you know, some people would say, just to be open to things that we're not thinking of. That's why I argue for the six-month and then an extension. I understand your point. I'm just trying to protect our residents and protect our community on both sides.
Right.
That's the point of this, right? Like, gotta look at both angles.
Yeah, right. And it's clear that we can't get to three pages of written words without having different.
Correct.
Maybe you're right.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't see us getting it done in some sorts.
I, I would never say that. I would never say that.
But you're right.
Right.
No, they're expensive. Attorneys are expensive.
You guys are, I've, I've, I've seen more expensive attorneys. All right, so.
I've paid more expensive attorneys.
Try to be efficient.
All right, so are we okay with six months for now going forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
All right, hardship. Should any owner of property affected by this local law suffer an unnecessary extraordinary hardship due to the enactment and application of this local law, then the owner of said property may apply to the town board of town of Montgomery writing for a variance from strict compliance with this local law upon submission of proof of such unnecessary hardship. For the purpose of this local law, unnecessary or extraordinary hardship shall not be the mere concern that regulations may be changed or adopted or that the plan may be amended. The mere delay in being permitted to make an application or waiting for a decision on the application for a variance, special permit, site plan, subdivision or other permit during the period of the moratorium imposed by this local law. B, an application for an exemption based upon unnecessary or extraordinary hardship shall be filed with the town clerk, including a fee of one thousand.
Dollars.
Dollars, that's an N. One thousand and, oh, it's reserved, okay, one thousand dollars. For each tax map parcel, I know, it's been a long day. For each tax map parcel claimed to be subject to unnecessary or extraordinary hardship. So basically, it's a thousand dollar fee. Um, okay, shall provider. Okay.
Can we raise that?
Can we raise that fee?
Yeah, because I don't know, we've seen five hundred all the way up.
And so the, the, the fee is in consideration of your experts reviewing the application and the time that goes into that, so. For a tax map parcel.
Okay.
You can't, right, it's not like a.
Including a fee of one thousand dollars for each tax map parcel claimed to be subject to unnecessary extraordinary hardships are.
So there might be three tax, three thousand dollars.
Right, it's, it's correct. Yeah.
And then it's considering your experts' time in reviewing.
Yeah, so it gives us some flexibility there. All right, what's claimed necessary shall contain such other information or documentation as the town board or its designee, which we're not gonna have a designee with the town board. This would all come from, that's something we all felt strongly.
Mm-hmm. Wait, I'm sorry, where is that?
Uh, where the bottom of B.
Bottom of B, okay.
Last sentence, it says, um, town board or its designee.
Yep.
With strike, or its designee.
Yeah, we can take that designee there.
Sure.
Shall prescribe as necessary for town board to be fully informed with respect to this application. So, yeah, you can strike that end part. We're gonna hear everything, the town board.
Okay.
Right?
End after the town board, correct?
I'm sorry?
So it'll end after the town, after, as the town board.
Yes, Stephanie will fix that. Procedure, upon submission of a written application to the town clerk by the property owner seeking a variance of this local law, the town board shall, within forty-five days of receipt of a completed application, schedule a public hearing on said application upon five days' written notice in the official newspaper of town of Montgomery. Uh, at said public hearing, the property owner and any other parties wishing to present evidence with regard to the application shall have an opportunity to be heard. And the town board shall, within fifteen days of this, close of said public hearing, render its decision either granting, denying, granting in part or denying in part the application for a variation from the strict requirements of this local law. If the town board determines that a property owner will suffer an unnecessary or extraordinary hardship if this local law is strictly applied to a particular property, then the town board shall vary the application to this local law to the minimum extent necessary to provide the property owner relief from strict compliance with this local law. D, standard of review. In reviewing an application for an exemption based upon a claim of unnecessary or extraordinary hardship, the town board shall consider the following criteria. The extent to which the proposed development activity would cause significant environmental harm, adversely impact surrounding natural resource areas, public health, comfort or safety concerns and/or have a negative impact upon the town. Very loose, generally. Whether the moratorium will expose a property owner or applicant to substantial monetary liability to a third person or would leave the property owner or applicant completely unable after a thorough, a thorough, is that supposed to be thorough?
Yes.
Review of alternative solutions to have a reasonable alternative use of the property. All right, anything on that section? That, that's pretty good, but I think there's some stuff to clean up. Go ahead.
Yeah, too. Uh, D A, what is the definition of significant environmental harm?
That's a good question.
Primarily significant.
I mean, that would be for the board too, to permit.
It gives us flexibility.
Under that, okay. And the, the next one would be, um, the next clarification, D B. What is the definition of substantial?
Again, it's, it's all in your review, so you would have to, on the record, provide your reasoning for it and why you came up with it and, um, ultimately leads to your determination.
And I think that's something that we need to consider moving forward or be considering.
If you wanna add it as a definition, you can consider doing that.
I, I.
It's difficult, you know.
I just wanted to bring it up just so that way we think about, you know, is substantial in nineteen forty, maybe five dollars, and substantial now might be a million. I mean, everybody has their own definition of what a lot of money is.
But that's the purpose of it is to be.
Just mindful.
More collective, a more decision, a more, a more, uh, debate and discussion.
I think the point of that language is to give us flexibility. So keep, be mindful of all those scenarios.
And to weigh all the, weigh all the factors and criteria that you need to, in a certain application.
Okay. Anything else in section seven? Section eight, penalties. Any person, firm or entity that shall construct and or develop a warehouse or distribution center in any district within the town or would have a result, um, the enlargement, relocation or modification of an existing facility in violation of the provisions of this local law or shall otherwise violate any of the provisions of this local law shall be subject to, yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars or imprisonment of fifteen days.
I need to have, you need to get the dollars. Or ask five thousand dollars.
Speedy tickets more than that.
All right, well, let's get these specific with our feedback. So how many more are we adding?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
There you go.
If they're, well, I mean, about it, if they're, if they're violating it, they have the money to pay the, the fine.
So, so based on, so based on, we, we're gonna have to look at this, cause what you have to be very careful of is what that number is. And I know there's plenty of court cases out there, people getting litigated because of a town for, you know, having unreasonable levels of fees. So we need to.
I can, I can do some research and give you guys a range.
Yeah.[1783.91]
Yes, based on case studies, please.
Yes.
Uh.
Fifteen day days of prison, so I mean, you, you can get a guy off the street, they won't put him in prison down here.
That's true.
This is illegal, like, you know.
How does this, how does the bail reform affect this?
Not a criminality.
So, section A, uh, second line down, the, the result in enlargement, I mean, is that fullback under my original.
Yeah, so I, that's exactly when, when we were just reading that, I was, um, yep. Well, I'll look, I'll look more deeply into that and, and maybe we can have a discussion about that as well and, and.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Uh, in adjunctive relief interference. Okay, so the penalties look alright, aside from adding some zeros, and we're gonna get some feedback on that, and everybody's got the penalties.
Yes.
Any application accepted or approval granted in violation of this local law shall be null and void. Section nine, um, superseding and repealer provisions, this local law shall supersede the applicable sections of Article sixteen of the town law. Do you wanna just give a quick rundown of this section, it's very technical.
Yeah, so, so, right, so the purpose of this is because it was, it's, it's based upon case law, you, when you are in, in town law currently, obviously, the zoning board of appeals, for example, has certain duties that are given to them by the state and the, and the, and the planning board and the town board, but this is altering that because you're stopping all of their abilities and duties, and when you do that, you can do that, but there's case law that says that the town specifically has to, in their legislation doing that, state which portions they are repealing or superseding, so that's the purpose of this. And if you go and look through all those sections, you know, I, I visually don't know each of them by heart, but they're all relating to, uh, duties that you are proceeding in this.
Okay, thank you. Separability, section ten, if any part or provision of this local law, or the application thereof to any person or circumstance be adjudged invalid by any court or competent jurisdiction, such judgment shall be confined in its operation to the part or provision or application directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment shall have been rendered and shall not affect or impair the validity of the remainder of this local law, or the application thereof to other persons or circumstances. And the town board of town of Montgomery hereby declares that it would be, it would have passed this local law, or the remainder thereof, had such invalid application or invalid provision been apparent, please explain that one.
Separability, it's a basic protection of the law, so if somebody were to sue, sue on, on, on this law, they would be applicable to, to their portion only unless the court were invalidated the whole law, but this would allow the argument to be made that it doesn't need to, and it can only, it only needs to be fact specific.
Built-in protections, okay.
Yes.
Any, any comments on that one, section ten, alright, looks well read. Uh, section eleven, repeal, all ordinances, local laws, and parts thereof inconsistent with this local law are hereby repealed. Uh, effective date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing in the office of the New York State Secretary of State in accordance to section twenty-seven of municipal home rule law. So that basically, it, it's effective date is when it's filed, which could be a matter of interpretation based on who's working in the clerk's office in the state that day.
No, not interpretation, meaning like whenever.
Availability.
Whenever the stamp gets on the.
Correct, whenever the employee decides to stand it.
I, yeah, and, and.
I used to know people in home.
And depending, you know, if our clerk's, if our clerk's office takes the extra fee to overnight it versus just regular mail carrier, if you have some personal delivery.
Can, can we have, can we have Don Burger hand deliver it?
I'll, I'll deliver it.
The town would want to make a.
Can we write that into the law? Oh, he's excited.
He's set, we'll have lunch.
Okay, um. Okay. With respect to some of the comments that we've made, there's some really general things that we need to tune up, okay? There are some discussions that we need to have, and there are some things that we need to take into consideration, and before we set a public hearing, we would wanna have a document ready and more prepared so that we have no misinformation campaign or things that are open for interpretation. I really would like to, in respect to the comments made, a clean document that we have more or less agreed to with, with very, not as much up in the air that we have right now before we set a public hearing. I think from a responsibility standpoint, I can understand us moving, I think we're moving pretty quickly, but to also have that thoroughness, I would feel a lot more comfortable getting some of this feedback, doing a little bit more due diligence on our end. I personally wanna do, uh, much more of an economic study on what could happen, uh, based on some of the pending warehouses that would be affected, and what residual impact that could have to small businesses, I don't wanna just dismiss those arguments, I'd like a couple, like, the next two weeks between now and the next meeting to really get a better feeling for that, uh, so I can report that to you guys. And then also for you to answer your questions here from the residents, um, I've done a lot of due diligence to meet with local stakeholders, potential property owners, um, residents on both sides of this, and I think they appreciate the effort, but there still is a lot of conversations that I'd like to have, and, and I think, again, I'll reiterate, I think it's really important to have a little bit more of a detailed, official, ready product that we can give to people so that we can be prepared for public comment that's gonna, it will increase the integrity of the public comment, to have that more prepared, in my opinion, but I'd like to hear what you guys think.
So, but next week, we're gonna look to do interviews, right, I mean, that's coming out later on.
Yeah, so at the end of the meeting, we'll have a special meeting next week, we'll pick a time based on doing the interviews, uh, for the complaint committee.
So can we say, let's focus on, let's add this to that agenda, and we'll also revisit what the, what the edits are?
What we'll do, like we.
And we'll address the public hearing then, but we'll put that on the agenda for next week and see how we can get this cleaned up and discuss it next week.
So, I think we, we certainly can open up the possibility, cause we'll have a meeting, right? But I think the way we usually word the special meetings is, and conduct other business.
Yeah.
So we can just leave it there, and it reserves us the right to bring it up if we need to, and even if we're not ready for it, at least a little bit. Uh, but I do wanna focus that special meeting on the interviews.
Have you fixed a date for the special meeting, I'm sorry?
No, we have not, that's gonna happen later.
No, we're gonna get to that later on.
Special meeting is gonna be, us interviewing people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be exact, so.
But we will all be together, so that would give us another chance to relook at this.
You're right, no, it certainly gives us another opportunity, and then one week later, we have our next meeting, so we have two opportunities to set a public hearing if we're ready.
You're not gonna be able to interview people, you wanna interview, uh, one meeting, probably.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Or that's later on, let's, let's get to that.
We have a plan for that, Ron, I swear. Yeah, we do.
So, I included in you guys' packet, took some information that I thought about, uh, criteria for moratorium, um, you guys can read through that, there's the secret regu- regulations, and then there was also the, uh, one of the classes that I attended at the training last week was elected town officials regulating land use by an attorney up in Albany, so that's interesting to read through, that goes through zoning, uh, comprehensive plan, moratorium, so on and so forth. The last page is a, uh, list of the projects that are in front of the planning board, what type they are, square footage, um, truck bays, number of cars, and notes, so that way you guys can take an idea of what our planning board is going through now, and, um, just how important this, this, I mean, I, I, you guys all understand how important this, this is, but that's what they're dealing with.
Okay, Dana? Okay.
It's like a pop it, right?
No, I hear you, ano- another thing I would recommend is, um, speaking to, uh, some of the elected officials and planning board chairs that have gone through a moratorium or are currently going through moratoriums, I've had a couple of those conversations, I'll definitely put you in touch with some of those people, uh, why it was good, why it was bad, some of the case studies on potential litigation, things like that, that's gonna be important over the next week as well, next two weeks, and throughout this process to really get those case studies on, on how it's worked.
And interesting what, what New Windsor's going through, cause I spoke to one of the council members at dinner when I was up in Albany. So, I, I, feel free to give me a thought if you wanna know what's going on there.
And in respect to, um, just putting it out there, cause I, I believe in both sides, I believe in looking at everything, I, I think it's very narrow-minded to, to suggest that you're not thinking about your residents by not having the concerns of developers in mind as well. I think there are certain developments that obviously positively impact residents, so I think you can be concerned about developers and also be concerned about town residents at the same time, not to be quoted or anything, but I mean, that's my feeling. Yeah, I mean, and you have residents that are developers, so.
But you have residents that are within a thousand feet of, that's lived there their whole lives, and can't change or look at potential developments that's going to hinder their quality of life, so you're right, you have to look at both sides.
My point is, it's not exclusive, it's not, you know, separating sides, there's definitely continuity there, there's, there's equal thought process to go in, in, weighing what we do, and how we, how we add.
And what's interesting is, in talking to one of the potential developments today, was looking at, it's not even during construction, but let's look at the projects that we have in our town now, our people are employed on those projects, the electricians, when lights go out, the, the plumbing, I mean, our people are still involved and are still hired, and people working on the developments that we have, the current infrastructure in our town, so how much more do we really need to fill?
Well, I, again, that's something that we need to look at, I, I wanna do a deep dive into our budget, I wanna do a deep dive into our, the pilot agreements that are in place now, and, and what our benefit is in terms of, like, say, UNFI, they're in year six now, we just got a massive check for the first year of our pilot, and weighing the revenue produced by new land town road and, and our rising expenses, uh, some of our legacy payments in our retirement, some of our build, I mean, all these things need to be considered to a degree, obviously, it's gonna be done as quickly as possible, but these are things we need to have in our, in our mind while we go through this process, because to say it won't impact us, uh, in some way negatively economically, that's just naive, right? So we need to measure that, we need to have a little bit more, um, you know, meat, and I'll, and I'll be working on that every day. So I'll be, I'll be trying to present that for our next meeting.
And when you talk to the realtors, talk to how many houses are up for sale?
Yeah, so.
How many people are moving out here, how many people are staying here?
So that's, that's an important point that was brought up, I, I had a meeting with, uh, some of the local Realtor firms, and one thing that, that I suggested is developing a supervisor's Realtor task force to really get some feedback just separate from the moratorium, i- it's just a conversation, because they're on the front lines in terms of trying to sell our community to people, so they'll know why people are leaving, or what their issues are, and how they really feel about the fulfillment, and if that scares them away as a potential buyer. So we've been getting to have some of these discussions, they're really important in this process, so I think it's worth the extra week or two to keep having those conversations, uh, before setting a public hearing.
I think we revisit it next week.
Yeah, we can do that, we have the flexibility.
See where we're at next week.
Alright, are we ready to move on, do you, you have plenty of feedback, we'll be keeping in touch, but we're looking forward to seeing a cleaner document, but that was honestly, I think, a very good start.
Uh, I'm going to digest everything everybody said, and I will make sure to do a clean copy and a markup copy.
Yes, please.
Yes, please, thank you.
Do we need to post that on our website or anywhere?
It's not, it's not introduced yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we weren't.
Absolutely.
Violation of anything.
Alright, moving on to our wastewater treatment plant update, Sean, never mind, that's not you, that's Highway Garage. Wastewater treatment plant update, uh, so at our last meeting, um, we requested some emergency funding uh, to take care of some of our wastewater treatment plant issues, and, uh, I'll be happy to report that, uh, we did the camera and imaging, uh, the twenty-first, and, uh, as you guys are leaving, we'll just, okay. So, today, we actually started the repair work, uh, tame enterprises, they're estimating it will take one or two days, so the imaging did catch, uh, potential, uh, issues we might have, but it didn't give a full picture, so what they'll probably do is, when they get in there, get a better idea of how bad the damage is and where it is, and then clean it up. So I'll keep you guys posted, I just wanted to provide a quick update, you have any questions on that?
You gave them enough money to make the, me to.
To a degree, right, like, if it's a big problem, they're gonna come back to us, and we'll be ready, hopefully, we'll have an idea of what's in our fund balance, capital fund balance there, and so we're wanting to. Alright, now, C, Highway Garage, go ahead, Sean.
Well, I thank you for putting it on the agenda, um, in March and in May of two thousand nineteen, there was engineering reports done on our Highway Garage, um, you can read through them, uh, the building was built in the sixties on one half, the other section was built in the seventies, um, it's only, not only in bad shape, but we've also outgrown it, um, the energy efficiency really isn't there, there's a lot of holes in the building, not including, we go through about six hundred gallons a week in heating fuel, um, a new shop, I would hope we could build for the future, we could, um, essentially add other departments to it, like, give water sewer a bay, since they don't really have a spot, um, give parks department a bay, and then essentially the funds or however you'd say, would be split up between departments instead of just highway, uh, being in the entire building. I spoke with Senator Scoopis last week, um, there wasn't really any grants as far as a building goes, but there was energy grants through, uh, Nicerda that would pay for, he thought insulation, windows, things, lighting, possibly in solar panels on the roof type of thing to, uh, bring the cost down, and energy savings. And, um, I believe Jason Anderson is here too, um, he gave a proposal for, uh, design work on the building, and he also, uh, it's not just design work, but so overseeing the project, and it's also demolition of the old building, cause there's a few things that would have to be done for the old building to get taken down, we have electric going to the salt shed, we have electric going to the back dial bus that also runs through our building, so things would have to be changed up a little bit, but, I don't know if he wants to speak on that as well, but I'm just asking you whether we go with his proposal or you put it out for an RFP that we can move this forward and.
So, so I'm glad we're bringing it up, a lot of these items, we're bringing up just to let everybody know we're working on all these things, and they have to keep moving, I think, uh, and I'll let the board speak for themselves, that there is a comfortability level in, in terms of RFPing it, uh, to, to give ourselves a couple of options. We want to get the highway guys and the community to know that we're thinking of them, we're moving this along, but we wanna do it diligently and thoughtfully. Uh, so I, I just wanted to let you find out what you guys think too.
No, I think it should be RFP.
Cindy?
Yeah, I think we will pretty much agree on that, but.
I would RFP it, but, um, really, in developing the RFP, I would ask that you look at, um, engineering firms that can handle more of an all-encompassing, I mean, we have one that's an architectural firm, but also look, look at, to have things to compare against an engineering firm that can handle the mechanical, the civil, and, um, all the aspects of it versus this Anderson Design Firm does not include, it, it's MEP, if you look at their, their costs on page two, MEP, design development, um, there is a, an amount for that, but, um, you know, when you go down to civil slash site assistance, zero five, point zero three, point zero one, civil surveying, presentation assistance, that's hourly, because he has to actually hire out a civil engineer, so, um, you know, I would, I would put an emphasis on looking at engineering firms that can handle the whole thing.
And again, we're just writing an RFP here, right, so whether an architecture or an engineering firm applies, we can then weigh that and take a look.
So, well, what, can you discuss as you were, you had said an RFP for the design, so you wanted.
Yes.
So, so the way I'm looking at is.
So you're gonna get similar things as this one, then?
Right, so we're looking at design, construction services for the Montgomery Highway Garage.
Design and construction services.
Yes.
Sean can give it, you have the information, right, I mean, that's what we gave them something for this.
But that's what, that's what this was, though, it was design and construction.
This, we did a walk-through, uh, Todd's Highway Superintend at the time, uh, Mark Coit came for it, Jason was there, we did a walk-through of the property, just a list of going through certain highway garages, we kinda, you can choose what worked best, um, some of the newer highway garages, like Crawford, I went and spoke to them, they wish they did a few things different, so I'd like to, you know, essentially build it big enough that we can grow into it, and also, uh, in a smart way that's energy efficient, even separating the mechanic space, so you can have temperatures set at different, now, you can store the trucks over here at a cooler temperature where the mechanics would be working in a warmer climate.
But my point was more of, when you write the RFP, cause I take it Stephanie's gonna write this, or Will.
Yeah, Stephanie's gonna write the RFP. Or Will, yeah.
Um, specifically stating that, um, the firm that applies will be able to handle the whole project, so that way you're not subcontracting out this part, or this part, or this part, you know, it's more of a.
So, we're, we're just looking for a plan, right, so are you saying we wanna RFP for someone to go through the plan and be able to do the construction?
That's, well, that's what this, right.
Well, you're gonna need a civil engineer to do the, the plan too, according to this one.
So you're, you, okay.
They're gonna sub out most of the work anyway.
Yeah, Jason.
Yeah.
Me, turn and speak.
Yeah.
Jason, you wanna make some comments, even though we're gonna RFP this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, hey, you can take a seat right here if you'd like.
Thanks, Jason.
Absolutely, so what you're, if you wanna RFP it, what you're really looking for is architectural, usually fees, so you're looking for the design, you see that, so you'll have a firm that gives you architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, and civil if you request, so that's what you're looking for, you won't really be doing construction, that's a design-built project, that actually will go out to be.
That's another RFP.
Correct.
Definitely don't wanna call it that, design and construction, if you're not.
That's the straight design.
Yeah.
Straight.
Okay.
You might wanna add, uh, check you for, you know, the mendus, oil spills, etc.
And I wouldn't limit it, so essentially, we were asked to provide for the building, which does not include civil, so what you're wanting to do is basically send out an RFP for everything, cause if you limit it to certain things, and maybe, let's say it's asbestos or something else, and you have to hire an engineer, it comes into our inspection.
It'll be including the cost, because it's in the RFP, right, so, okay, which was your point, right?
All individual. My, my point was that I want a firm that's going to be able to handle everything.
Yeah.
Not, not have to sub out individual parts.
Can we RFP that?
Yeah. So like the, so for example, what we would do if we chose to respond to the RFP is we would have a civil engineer as part of the package.
That's it.
Okay.
That's exactly where I'm going, but because then-
It's just, it's how you ask that question first.
All right. To me, we're saying the same thing, but-
They're providing the specs and we're going to bid on this.
I understand. What, so whether they sub it out or it's included in our RFP, like it's-
But I don't want, to me, I wouldn't want to say, okay, well, this is hourly. No. I, I, I would want an amount because that way that person, that's an amount that would-
That's not what that was, just so you're aware. That was-
I'm just using the essence.
So, but that line doesn't, that's not beaten for civil engineer. That's for assistance with that. So actually, what this request was for was there was a separate civil engineer that actually started the survey and was going to do the rest of the civil area.
Okay.
So this was to assist him with his piece because you have to work together.
Okay.
So in developing one moving forward, that would be my admonition.
Do you have any questions, Stephanie, on that?
Uh, yes. So we're, you're going to motion to direct me to draft the RFP. Does the board want to then review this RFP and then set a set, uh, uh-
I don't think we need to.
Set a set date? Or you want to set the target date now?
No, I think we can set a date. I-
Can I, can I recommend that Sean and Brian? I'll make that motion, but I'll add to it that Sean and Brian need to review the RFP.
Yeah, subject to our approval. But I, I don't want to waste that much. We could, we could get, I'd like to set the date.
So, so set the date by motion now, I would suggest.
Okay. Man, this female.
Just one comment. Stephanie, if you take our scope report, those are basically meeting minutes from the meetings that we had. So that'll help you understand.
All right, thank you.
That saves on my efficiency.
We need to get a sound consultant in here ASAP.
So, thank you very much.
It's not me.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
You walked away and there's no back noise, so it was new. All right, so we're going to make a motion to create, director, try to have an RFP for the design services for Montgomery Highway Garage. And the, the date, what is it, end date, what is it called?
The return date.
Return date is going to be Friday, February 14th. That will give us plenty of time to receive these and to be able to hopefully move on this for our second meeting in February.
And I made that motion.
You made the motion. Okay, uh, subject to, uh, the supervisor and Highway Superintendent's review of the, of the RFP.
Wait, we're going to have them return? We're going to get the RFP out and have these back by February 14th or by December?
We're going to notice, we're going to notice immediately, the RFP.
That's not going to happen.
In three weeks.
That's right. No, because Stephanie's got to ask.
We can't get that out, get that back in three weeks.
We didn't march.
We can. We can move it out.
Maybe.
Is there a possibility of pre-fab building or not?
They have-
Hey, Mr. Anderson, are you still here?
Or Jim Far. We got two of them in the back.
All right. Give us a realistic timeframe. Yeah, come on up, Jim.
He is busy right now.
They should just stop everything and focus on Montgomery, okay? Do it in two weeks. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest at least a three week time for the time you advertise to receive of the proposal.
Okay, I wasn't far off.
So if you're going to advertise, when are you going to have it ready, Stephanie?
Well, see, this is the thing, is that if we advertise it-
Next Wednesday would be the-
If we, if I get it to the, if I get it to the paper tomorrow, we would have to, we would have to have the RFP ready for publication on Wednesday when it goes to the paper.
Okay.
So that would mean that we would, me, you and, and Sean would have to work Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday to have it done.
I mean, we could, we could get it in by next Wednesday and have it noticed. But if, if, if we're not going to have it done by our, uh, second meeting in February, we have more time to, to be flexible for our March meeting anyway.
Why don't you do it March 19th then? Let's not have another month rather than being stressed.
We want to have the end date be five or six days before one of our meetings, right? So- So let's get a calendar out.
Well, that's what I was looking at. Our first board meeting will be March 5th. The second will be the 19th.
All right, so let's have the end date.
You could probably receive them. Just available on the 29th. You get three weeks to receive them on February 19th.
Well, the meeting's the 19th, so, so what about getting them by the 13th?
Yeah, you want it soon before the meeting.
If it's promoted by the, we're talking about promoting it by the, uh, by the 29th of January, you'd have an entire month and, and five or s- five weeks. If it's ready by the 13th.
What's the date in the meeting?
Uh, March 219th. So if we get it in by the 13th-
March 19th, at least a week in it. Honestly. The 11th, because that way you can have more room to make copies and get them out to us.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
March 11th.
So end date, March 11th, so it'll be ready for us to hopefully take action by our March 19th meeting. Does that make sense to you, Stephanie?
Return date of March 11th?
Yes.
Three, 11, 20, 20. And I need to have copies to you and Sean to review. When do you want that?
For the RFP? Yeah, as soon as you're done. Uh, next week. So, so- All right. So you said three weeks is realistic, right? So if we have this out by, uh, Wednesday, February 5th, that's one, two, three, four, five weeks, right? So Stephanie, that gives you till January 31st to write the RFP and have it approved by me and Sean. That gives you eight days.
That is definitely-
You good with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Five days is doable also, but whatever you want.
That's what I was thinking.
I'll, I'll aim, I'll aims to have, do you, because it, it depends, because if you want it for the 29th, then I just need to have the advert, Tara, tomorrow morning.
Just put it on 31st because we're asking her to amend the order tomorrow in the end to, we're asking for a lot.
Yeah, no, the 31st is fine.
Okay.
31st is fine.
So Tara, I have to have it to you by next Friday.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, so Kristen made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any stating? Carry. Okay, we're moving on the Highway Garage, Sean. We're moving. Solar law. This is informational, uh, just a point of interest during the campaign. I, we, a couple of us noticed that when the moratorium came up on the solar law, there was discussion amongst you guys, particularly, uh, that there were some things to clean up still in the solar law. I've heard of some, some issues. I've seen some issues myself. So this is an opportunity. You all have the old solar law. You have the new solar law. Let's take the next two weeks. Let's really dig in, ask our questions. And then at our next meeting in February, we really want to try to give some feedback to our attorney to draft some of the changes and, and fix the solar law and make sure we, we have the right product that will serve our community well. That's all I had to say. That's my piece on it. Do you guys have any other questions?
If anybody wants to call me and talk about certain provisions, ideas that they have.
Anyone from the public? I know we had some great public comments in that. Just reach out to us.
Yeah, I saw, I have those comments.
Okay, good.
I have those. That's something that we're interested in incorporating into the-
Yeah.
Yes. So when are we looking to put this back on the agenda?
We're looking to put it back on February 6th. And then on, at that meeting, the goal would be to provide feedback to our attorney to draft a local law by our second meeting in February. That would be my personal goal. And that's not even a motion. It's just informational. I just wanted you guys to have it on the radar.
So not like, um, we don't have enough to do, but just, um, you know, if, if we're going to look at the solar law, there's two other laws that I'd like to look into.
Yeah, go ahead.
The junkyard law, specifically when I talk, I called Charlie Kearns regarding a Highway Garage and a new update to his zoning. He brought up about the, the junkyard law also. And Maybrook did pass it too. So I would like to put that on the agenda also to take a look at that law to see if we could incorporate that into our agenda for next one. And then local law number one of 2005 has a lot of deficiencies in it also, so I'd like to take a look at that.
We've talked about both these. I agree completely. If we're ready to have more meetings like this, we'll put them both on for discussion at our next meeting.
I'll bring cookies. Throw over there and coffee.
Put them on the discussion meeting.
We'll get you the info. It, we'll, we'll put them on the agenda.
Just let me know what you want me to draft.
Correct. We're not going to need you to draft anything unless we want to take a look maybe and use the Crawford one for junkyard.
Yeah, that's easy.
So let's do that. Let's try to draft that. Give us something that's in draft form for that one.
For the February-
For the junkyard law, for the February 6th meeting.
Do you want my copy? I have the copy of what Crawford passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something that I know the community is interested in as well.
Okay. That, yeah, that's easy.
And here's, there's comments on the top. That was provided to, provided by Michelle in the previous administration, but he never captured it.
Really?
Yes. So I'm sorry if you guys didn't know about it. It was asked to be on the agenda. So, um, yeah, if those two, I mean, I can provide you guys information with the local law and my issues with that on a markup copy too.
All right, thank you. All right, moving along. Restroom facility storage at Brea Park. Mr. Deputy Supervisor, you're up.
Yes.
We have Lou Dorrell here who's got the contract. It's been awarded last, three months ago, four months ago. Contact with the lawyers. Lou and I have spoken three, four times in the last couple of weeks. I also have Sean involved. The contract will be extended basically because of lag on our part. Lou's here to make a quick presentation about building the bathrooms at Brea. So the kids turn the football game and the parents go to the bathrooms.
Good evening, everybody. Lou Dorrell with Clean Air Quality Service. So what we did basically, we just extended it from December 15th because that passed to June 30th. And we do, uh, we did accept a liquidated damages clause of 250 hours a day after it's not substantially completed by June 30th. So we don't see any reason why.
Sean, and our Highway Department's going to dig the trench from the well through the-
And that is to keep the cost down.
And that takes a great-
There's an ad alternate. Yeah, we were just worried if we get free period snow on April 15th. You know, so we pushed it to June 30th. And it's really for the football season, so-
I, I thought it could be July.
Yeah, and Highway, we'll be, we've already met on site a couple of times just to not have to use the change order clause, uh, just to keep the cost down for the town. So, I had two contracts. And then a question came up yesterday about employer's liability. We, our exceed what the town requires in insurance and our workers' comp is statutory, so there's, it's unlimited. And employer's liability is included, so I included our certificates with the contract.
That's in the capital account that the town has, not to affect the tax rate at all. That money is funded by when people come into the town in Montgomery. You pay a parks and recreation fee of $2,000. The, the amount that we had in the account as of December 18th plus 44,000 we got in revenue last year brings us about 150,000 more than we're going to need to complete this project. That doesn't mean I want the extras, but we should have plenty of money in the account to take care of that. As I said, it won't affect any tax rate at all.
Are there any other substantial projects in the docket that we need to do for the parks or that would beat that?
Not, not, we have money in the parks in our budget, 150,000, but as far as capital improvement, I don't think so. Brian and I spoke. I'm going to visit all the parks, all our facilities there. They might be, they might be a project for the barn at Benedict. We might want to repair that roof. But there's nothing that I can see that's going to be 150,000 dollars. So we're going to walk the rail trail, go to Benedict, go to Brea, go to Riverfront. There is some work in Riverfront.
Our plan, our plan was to seal the rail trail in this part.
Okay, seal coat that?
No, they own these, the blocks.
Yeah.
So longer than we sealed, correct?
So if you seal the whole thing, basically it's three miles, right? So it's 15,000 feet times six foot.
It's 10 foot wide.
It's about 150,000 square feet.
At 15 cents a square foot, it's probably comes out to about 20,000 dollars.
Okay.
Depending on the prevailing wagering too.
I just wanted to make sure that we don't have another danger.
No, the only other thing, I, we got to, uh, show myself in Mr. Core or in the clothing inspection. We're going to review, we're going to go to see the barn on Benedict. Go through the roof problems.
But doesn't this one have to be for brick and mortar? It can't be for wood here, right?
It's not supposed to be for maintenance. It's supposed to be for brick and mortar. It's part of, that's maintenance, ceiling head. And the problem with money, that budget, we'll have to talk about that.
No, when we know what the full amount is.
No, I, I, he's right. It's going to be 15, 20,000 dollars for seal coating. That's, that's, even if it's like 20 cents a square, but that quality, that, that length, you'll get a good price on that. And we should bid that out though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Or you could, there's no state bid on that.
I don't think there's anybody understanding bid for this.
I mean, I've said-
But there's, this is the blacktop capital of the world, so we should get three or four bids on that real quick. And they can do that, you know, they, I would recommend maybe do it by section. They don't want to block off the whole thing.
And close the whole in half one day.
Now, they have stuff, now you can work on it the next day.
And Shuanggang owns part of it too, so we can hook up with them in their section too, so it's all done at one time.
Okay, so are we good working, moving forward? The motion would be uh, to authorize supervisor to execute the Brea Park restroom construction agreement with Clean Air Quality Service, Inc., subject to final approval by our attorney.
I'll make that motion.
I thought it was already.
No, we just finalized the contract yesterday. It was just the contract language that we- Oh, no, I've been awarded it. I've been awarded it. It's just the contract language.
Touch base with maybe, you know, a couple of weeks ago.
Hold on, let's do the motion first.
Yes, I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. We're excited.
So executable copies go to Stephanie for review and then to you.
I, if, if-
This is what I emailed you.
Okay.
There's no changes with the exception, I just added our insurance, our workers' comp.
Stephanie, just send me what we need to sign.
Sure. We'll do.
Thank you, Lou. We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks for-
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you for waiting. All right.
He's a resident. He wants to know what we're doing.
He's from Row. All right, moving forward, Ethics Board. So, um, hey, Joe, are you here still?
Yes.
Come on up, man. Come on up, Joe. Be part of this discussion.
Quickly, I just added a thing in your packet. Did I get them all?
I know, so I was trying to put the sign.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody's got them.
Yeah, but I have like five of them.
I have like five of them too. I don't know why.
We're just being really, uh-
It was only one.
We're being really diligent, okay? All right. All right, let's, let's, let's stay on task.
These were the notes from the class that I took up and all. Sorry, Joe.
All right, and there's five pages each for all of you. All right, so I have been in conversations with our Chairman of our Ethics Board. This conversation is twofold. The first is cleaning up our, our ethics law. And us as a board making a determination on what type of event the board, we want to serve our town. Is it going to be an ethics board that conducts investigations? If so, they need to be given the proper finances, the authority. And they need to have a little more clarity on what they're doing, how they're doing in terms of the investigations. Or do we want it to be an ethics board that simply renders opinions, like many neighboring municipalities do, like Denton Walden, where, you know, Sherry or Cindy or any employee can say, hey, according to the ethics code, I don't know if this is unethical or not. They go to the ethics board and they bring their opinion as to whether or not it's ethical or not.
And then that will go to the county?
Town board, correct. That is traditionally what happens in, in the majority of communities. When you get into investigative ethics boards, it becomes tough. It, it, politics does get in the way. And also, they didn't have the resources to conduct the investigations. They, they didn't. The town board did not give them the resources they needed in fairness to the ethics board. So, um, the first part of this is what we want to do to potentially change that law to make it more of a, again, I just want to get your opinions. And the second piece of this is what, what do we do with the investigations that you submitted to us? And we'll get to that in a second, Joe, but I wanted to get some feedback from this board moving forward as to what they believe the function or ethics board should be.
I mean, I myself think that it should be more like the Kennedy and Walden where they are just, uh, you know, informational board.
Okay.
Yes.
A re, a resource to employees.
A resource to employees and board members, sure. Cindy?
Aye.
Employees and officers.
And officers, right. Uh, Kristen?
I'm going to hold on.
Okay, Ron?
I agree. I, I don't think that, I'm not sure who does the investigation. You need a certification in ethics board investigation when you get ex detectives or you just get good people.
Let's let Joe speak to what they've been doing. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
One, one thing, here, here's the board vibe. We discussed it based on our meetings, conversations. So whatever the board's tasked to do based on law, the board's prepared to do. So I, I know we don't want to, you know, what happened before happened based on input we were given and the way the law is written. In fact, we had written up that there's- we had written up that there's contradictions in the law with.
Yeah.
The, um, uh, authority of ethics board, one part says you have authority, and then the back part says this law shall not constitute authority, so there's already contradictions. The one thing I would want you to consider though, if we're looking, if you're gonna look at, you know, it's a resource for the town, uh, officials, town employees, where's the resource for the public? You have to figure that piece out.
What do you mean?
Because ethics board is, is there and you can look, it, it's a place the public can go, uh, if they suspect unethical activity.
Well, that's the little bit of opinion board.
It, it, right, but, but I didn't hear you mention.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not, it's not for us to go there, it's for the public to go there, too.
I've just gotta throw that in too.
Correct. Well, so the public, the public could, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but so the public could bring a issue to the town board, or could, they could, they bring an issue directly to the ethics board and say, hey, is this unethical of, of this person?
Can they right now?
They can right now, if, if we were to have a board that renders opinions, would that still be part of it?
If that's how you write the law, yeah, you can, you can always narrow it, you can narrow it and not allow it, or you can.
And what, what's the difference between getting your opinion, because I've read some of your opinions, and they're very good, and they're detailed, and I've read it and I trust you. What's the difference between that and somebody does an investigation and the opinion of the investigator?
There's this piece of the law, and I think that's what Brian alluded to and what we alluded to, there's a piece of the law where the ethics board can find people, can do this, it's just about put them in jail.
Yeah.
Don't have authority to do that, perhaps in the law.
Violation of general municipal law eighteen.
You know, you know, we can create, we can have hearings and all that.
Like, it technically gives you.
Do we have the power of hearing?
So, so.
We would send it to you.
Right.
We send you the opinion, and we always quote what laws we find.
Right.
So it's not our personal opinions, like, this is what we think and this is what we're saying, and, and we're not perfect, and in the past we kind of got, uh, some misinformation, let's leave it at that.
So, so what's important is we get to drafting a law that we're comfortable with, so that the ethics board is functioning, and there are no, you know, things in the law that contradict each other, and then giving them the resources they need to do their job. So those are two things that I think we need to focus on with the ethics board.
What resources?
Well, really, the only one is, if there's, uh, an opinion, we have to render against somebody sitting at this table.
Right.
We can't go to the town attorney, correct? We have to have somebody else. If it's a different town official, like say the planning board, IDAs, zoning board, appeals.
Wouldn't be the zoning, because there is zoning as well, yes.
Okay, witness, common, common term, okay, well, if it was, uh, let's just say the planning board, we could do this contract.
And it would be under our budget line and the same hourly rate, and what we would need to figure out is, in the instances where we would have town board members, we would have a special counsel, we would probably write it up, maybe an RFP, or maybe just figure that out. RFP for that, those specific cases, and we can just keep the same hourly rate and stay consistent within our budget, and then it's just in our, in a line that already exists in our budget, and we're, we're staying within that line.
Right, because you're either gonna pay attorney A or attorney B.
We're gonna pay the same amount, right.
The, the thing I'd like to offer, and, and I know Bob Santos, you still here, Bob? I mean, at our next meeting, I mean, I wouldn't mind, I could bring it back to the board, we could go through our law ourselves and say, we could grant X a lot of things, we think.
Yeah.
And we could give you our input and say, there's just no way, just take this out.
I'm good with starting there, if you guys are.
I was gonna say, I think that's a good place to press.
Okay.
A lot of it's just, I don't know.
Or I, I, I mean, I was thinking about taking somebody's surrounding law.
We can do that, right, we, we can take their feedback.
Yeah, and take your feedback.
And then we could do that as well, we can take a look at some neighboring laws, and then you, and give you, hey, here's the recommendation for the ethics board, here's also what we like, please draft the new law.
When we started, so it was on original board, number seven was the law, so whenever, whenever we got brought to life, I did meet with, uh, speak with, a few around, but mainly the town over, um, I don't have a copy of the law, but it's probably more offline.
Yeah.
They were pretty helpful, but.
Okay. So that's what we'll do, um, now.
Yeah, I'm just, one question, now, so, so, somebody comes off the street and tells you confidentially that I got a problem with this bomb dollar because of, uh, now, what do you, what's your first step? Do you, you do an investigation, do you talk to me, do you come up with some kind of credibility check before you get a lawyer involved, or a noted lawyer?
Well, here's the thing, we don't take anything anonymous, and it's gotta be in writing.
Okay.
Very few times will we take anything verbal, it's gotta be in writing, I have to have something to offer, so then we look at, uh, we've just had some in the past. We think this action is unethical, can we look into it? So we look at what's specific, first off, is the person a town official, did it fall under the ethics law? We've received from where the, the, the person, uh, in question is not a town official, it's not.
Correct.
We write back to them.
So policeman, policeman's not under.
The chief is.
What about a local, one of those sergeants?
Technically, you're an officer, but technically, uh, you're not, you're not on the list.
I think they're considered an employee now.
I haven't said so.
They're an employee, but, uh, it depends.
So you have to consider that, so town officers are employees.
I mean, they're a town employee.
I do, I do mean, I do mean that, I mean, I'm not positive, I, I read the ethics law, and if somebody brings an action against somebody, that person is supposed to be notified immediately, and.
Well, listen, let's not go backward, right, let's, let's get feedback from you.
Right, I can't disclose confidentiality in part.
I don't, I don't, we don't need to get into that right now, Joe.
Because we just had a situation like that, and I'll just say the individual was notified, and it wasn't our issue, and the supervisor was notified, but we owed an answer back to the resident, and the answer was, this is not an ethics board issue, and if you have concerns, your supervisor.
That was in twenty nineteen?
It was.
Twenty eighteen?
It was twenty twenty.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm missing what, which one that was. No, I remember, I'm just trying to narrow down a bit.
So, can you bring us back on a markup?
Yeah, look at that, yeah.
Yeah, provide us, provide us. Provide us the feedback, alright, and we'll go from there. Bob, did you have something?
Just one, one comment, with the failure in the past was when the ethics board made a, a decision, a recommendation, and wrote a letter, and went to the town board, that was it, there was no, the open meeting law, it was as a public communications to the town supervisor and the board members. So, at three separate meetings, after the letters were written, somebody in the audience, uh, asked, are there any communications this evening? And the answer was no, so what happened, that's in the past, so that communication from the ethics board went to the supervisor's board, and that was it, that was the end of it.
So, that's point number two of our discussion this evening. What do we do with those pending, you know, investigations that never really got to the full board? We are the new board now, um, within the current law as it's written, what is our responsibility in terms of hearing those investigations and rendering an opinion or a judgment? I'm just talking to Stephanie.
Your obligation, you don't have any obligation with the law to respond or do anything?
Really?
Yes, they do.
But it is communications.
That, that's just, that's just, why have an ethics board?
No, no, I, but, but technically, like, there's nothing here that says they must respond within this amount of days, they must do this, they must, that's what I mean.
But if we're, the ethics board has the right for feedback from the town board.
No one's, no one's on.
I'm not saying that they shouldn't, I'm just saying that the law, I'm reading straightforward, black and white, there's nothing that says that they must respond, or they must do this.
Well, go back from the investigation, look at an annual report, we have to spend an annual report, we submitted to the supervisor, Alan Thormund, he doesn't share it with the rest of the board, don't get any feedback.
Right.
We spent like two months of our time wasting.
Right.
Just on doing an annual report, and some of those recommendations were about the town law, so I think over, like, in November or something, they got a conference now.
Yeah.
And then, uh, some of the other stuff in the past, but there's only one thing that we investigated that's really open. How does this sharing information, which is in the speed, there's only.
We're gonna clean, we're gonna clean this up.
I know what, what you're talking about.
There's only one, and it's a public thing, I wanted to, like, because I, I can't bring it up, but if Mr. Berger mentions it, it's that thing.
And that is.
We're on month four, Joe.
You can't bring it up.
Four months.
Litigation. That, that particular thing is in litigation.
No, there was an opinion given by a private attorney, I wouldn't call that in litigation.
I was like.
And on that particular board, there is no right, and there is no time limit to that board, that's that well.
Alright, so, so, for the purpose of, for the purpose of going forward, we're gonna get feedback on changes made to the ethics law as a start, and then we're gonna make our, give our changes, and we're gonna draft something. Second part is that ongoing investigation, what do we wanna do with it? Do we wanna hear it and address it currently under our, under the guidance of our own existing law? Um, and I, I think.
Well, I think it has to probably be moved up.
You gotta do that in executive session.
Correct, we would do that in executive session.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
But this, this is just for us going forward, do we wanna take a look at that, because in all, in all fairness to the time they put into putting that together, we should look at.
Well, I, I wanna talk to council.
Okay, well, we can do an executive session at our next meeting, and we can come to an agreement and move forward. Okay.
Or if you go in an executive session.
We could add it tonight if you guys want. Yeah, seriously. Well, listen, guys, do you wanna do an exec tonight too?
Yes, I mean, we can talk about it.
I think we should, I think we should talk about it.
Alright.
But other than that, the only other thing pending was, uh, feedback from annual report, which a lot of it had to do with the law, and had, a lot had to do with, uh, the recommendations we made. There's still the local law from twenty eighteen, the public hearing's still open, we changed the, uh, ethics law to composition of board to add a town official, remember that one?
Yes.
That's still open. So we made comments about that, that's sort of in there. So you gotta figure out something about that, and that goes back two years now, almost.
Alright.
Two years, about a year and a half.
Well, when we, when we made the board again, we were supposed to look at the law at that time, and keep bringing it up, keep bringing it up.
Alright, let's, let's move on, we have it way forward, we're gonna get feedback from the ethics board in drafting the new law, we're gonna go and do exec this evening and talk about what we're gonna do in terms of that one open complaint, and, and.
Is that right, just one?
Oh, no, it's okay.
I just need to get confirmation, I'm sure my memory is right.
Alright, thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Joe, thank you and I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Of course, alright, so, uh, C, adoption of fee schedule, that was actually, uh, left on, it was supposed to be taken off, so we're just gonna cross that one right off. D, engagement letter with Nugent and Housler, uh, PC, this is, uh, right in front of you. Um, we're looking to get the audit started, and we did not cover this in our reorg meeting in terms of appointing an auditor. We were gonna determine whether or not we wanted to RFP certain services, I have a level of comfortability with this firm, they've already been reaching out to us, helping in a lot of different ways, they have a, a lot of knowledge in terms of years with the, the town, they know where line items are, they know where the fund balances, they have a good gauge, and I think we need to get this done immediately.
Will they do it this year for the seven?
They're gonna do it next week at tw, same price, and.
Same price?
The line is good, and, yep, the line is good, and, well, it's twenty-six thousand, not to exceed twenty-six thousand, so I'm pretty sure it's the same.
To let them move forward.
Uh, page five, you will see, um.
Is this adjusted more?
Yes.
Yes.
So how come the last number I have on an account later, the last update is December two thousand and eighteen? Didn't we, weren't they working for us for two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, but they don't do it, they don't, they can't give you any.
They gave me an update since December of two thousand and eighteen.
Nope.
No, we have an update, we, we have.
No, I did talk to them, and I don't have an update.
Right.
At the end of the year, during the summer.
So, all the expenses and all the revenues we have going into a particular account for the entire year, nobody knows how much we have in that balance.
That's still half of the year.
I can't get an update for July, that.
Right, that's the point, that's why we need to get them in there in order, and that's the problem, I agree with you here.
So that's why we have.
They will pay, they will pay for the nineteen.
They have an update of the, the, two, the, year end two thousand and eighteen, and that's the work that hit in twenty nineteen.
This is twenty twenty now.
And they're doing the work in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to get us a date by end of the year twenty nineteen.
We gotta approve them to do that.
Twenty nineteen, yes.
Yes, that's the audit.
And then they have to submit it, there's reports, I guess, they're doing. First we draft, and then we gotta accept.
The money that goes in the account, goes out of the account for all year, nobody really.
The finance department was.
Yeah, they're supposed to be better accounting, I'm just gonna say, and in, in the absence of that.
I mean, that was supposed to be what we were.
That's right. So, as we are cleaning up the accounting office, this is really important to working together to ensure everything is accurate, to ensure we have the proper expertise, it's in the budget, and, okay, and Sherry, you made the motion?
I've got the motion on the table.
Alright, and this motion is to, uh, approve and hire Nugent and Housler, PC, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit?
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen audit, twenty nineteen fiscal year.
Yeah, because all the stuff that has to be performed, they have deadlines.
I'm good, tell this guy. Uh, alright, anyone second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any standing, motion carried, thank you, that was very important. Okay, to the good stuff, so, first item, item E, uh, E, F, G are very much related. A resolution to authorize supervisor to sign a stormwater maintenance and easement agreement for Project Sailfish, Stephanie, would you give the board a quick update?
Um, we require this from, from the applicant, we're requiring them to enter into this agreement as part of the resolution from the planning board. It is, supervisor has to execute it, that needs town board approval, uh, this has been reviewed by my, my office, this has been reviewed by planning board attorney, this has been reviewed by, um, Jim Farr, and, uh, it's really a protection for the town and lays out procedures for it.
And this is separate completely from the wastewater treatment plan on site?
It's stormwater controls.
Stormwater controls, okay.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, I read the local law of, it says on the agenda for two thousand and nineteen, that'll be amended to one of twenty twenty.
Yes, local law one of twenty twenty.
Because, I mean, Stephanie, thank you for saying that it's a resolution by the planning board, but if you read the local law, it says provision setting forth requirements for construction bonding inspections and has built plans. So is this what E, F, G tied to the one, the local law that we're going to be enacting?
What do you mean?
So, local law number one of twenty twenty speaks to that, what is that bill, that bill plans.
Yeah.
It's, are these tied?
As, as.
Two separate things.
So they're not tied in any way, shape, or form, what we're doing with Sailfish? Well, that's what I'm wondering, because does this law make, determine these things?
If the local law should be passed before we do the acceptance of the letter.
Because it has, it would affect it.
Yes.
Right, alright, good point.
I was gonna raise my hand back there.
Yeah, alright, so that's what we're gonna do. Yeah, yeah, let's go right to, uh, H, approval of local law number one of twenty twenty. Jim, while you're here, my note is for you to give us an update on this local law, go ahead.
Alright, basically, this local law allows certain bonding requirements, and allows the town to collect inspection fees for both public improvements such as subdivisions and that might have water, sewer, stormwater roads to be dedicated to for public use, like some of the cul-de-sacs that we have, and also for non-public improvements such as parking lots for warehouses or commercial structures. And it lays out, for public improvements, everything has to be bonded, for non-public improvements, again, for parking lots, um, and such, and the stormwater control, anything over a project value of five or a thousand dollars needs to be bonded, because that's not stuff that we're taking over. It also requires that at the end of the construction phase, that the applicant, um, survey or engineer provides with added build plans, because obviously things change during construction. It also allows for the town to collect inspection fees, um, which is, uh, four, I'm sorry, five, page five, for inspection fees, because currently there's no inspections going on for the public and our public.
Okay, and a very important piece to note is that this local law was, the public hearing was open, and closing this, the thing was discussed by you guys last year, and it was just never acted upon, so this is us just executing it.
Even though there's, there's a problem too.
I mean, there's, yeah, we're ready to go.
Because, I mean, there's, there's a few areas that are concerning.
Go ahead.
Um, and Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, you said improvements, the improvements are, are to include all stormwater structures on bio-retained basins and landscaping. The improvements are, are to include all stormwater structures caused by overtaking basins and landscaping, right? In, in addition to the paving areas that you just mentioned?
Yes.
They, they are listed in here, okay. It's like section C one, A on page three, A says all improvements, so that does include, like I said, the stormwater structures caused by overtaking basins and landscaping, we're holding up to that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, page four, oh, we discussed that, I'm sorry. Page five, uh, number four, inspection fee, the second and last one says town consulting engineer, is it consulting engineer or should consulting be strictly, it says town engineer?
It's, it's consulting engineer because they're, they're rotating.
It's like the town, the planning board's consulting.
It's either the planning board's consulting engineer or it is, well, not for this one. For this one, it would be whoever, right now, that's an issue, because it's, it's whoever, I go to Brian and I say, who do you want me to give this to?
Who do you give this to?
That's my question, who isn't?
Well, since we don't have, we keep it flexible, that's what this law does, it allows us the opportunity to stay flexible.
And just, and just to also point out, this is, at the top you'll see it says introductory local law number twelve of two thousand and nineteen, that's number four of two thousand and nineteen, but that will be taken out when it's filed at this stage.
So it'll be number one of twenty twenty?
Yeah, and I kept that in there because that, it is still technically the introductory law.
And are there any penalties enforced if this is being followed?
I'm sorry?
Is there any penalties, I mean, not yet, in the last law there was penalties, is there any penalties enforced if these are not followed?
Well, we have the bonds.
We would, we would draw from the bonds, okay, to, to make sure it's done correctly.
It's one of the things that we, we don't, we don't have now, is we don't have any money to hold these people accountable. So if they don't do something that they were supposed to do, we're left to fight them.
Right.
With no backing essentially, other than Stephanie's saying.
Which was why this was established in the first place, right? Was that, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm ready to go forward with this.
I'll make a motion to approve the introductory law of number one of twenty twenty.
And there's a resolution.
Introductory, yeah, the introductory-
I'll, I'll read it, I got you.
Of four of nineteen.
So, we need a, a motion to approve local law amending section one forty of the zoning code to add section one forty dash fifty-five, a provision setting forth requirements for construction bonding inspection and as-built plans. This is local law number one of twenty twenty, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any standing, motion carried. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Appreciate you staying for the whole meeting for that.
You're welcome.
Yes.
All right. All right, so that is item, uh, H, which is done. Thank you, uh, Councilman Brown for recognizing that out of order. All right, E.
Did you sense my, uh?
Would I say counsel?
Yeah.
Resolution to authorize supervisor to sign the stormwater maintenance and easement agreement for project sailfish. Stephanie, would you go back to what you were previously saying?
Yes, this is something that, uh, we required for the resolution of the, um, from the planning board. Um, it's been reviewed by my office, planning board attorney, um, and Jim Farr in his capacity as consulting engineer there, um, and building center.
Yeah, he's got a couple of titles right there.
Yeah, he was, yeah, so that was helpful that he helped. Um, we are required here and we should go forward with adopting it.
Okay, there was some public comment, I just want to address it, uh, potentially having the litigation. This is procedural and administrative, so what in any capacity does the lawsuit have in terms of this procedural motion?
It, it does not affect this, the lawsuit did not include an injunction of any, of any form, so, um, the board has no legal restraints whatsoever with receiving of this tonight.
Okay, um, thoughts?
Hey, hi, and you guys are on your discussion.
Sure.
Um, my concern is that the new, and we have not gotten briefed on the second lawsuit that came in, um, from our council. So if you guys don't know, there are two, two lawsuits now, uh, two articles seventy-eights, and the second one that was just recently filed is in regard specifically to the secret process. That was done by the town board and the planning board, um, during the, uh, project sailfish. So my concern is that if we're going to approve, um, a letter to sign the stormwater maintenance and easement, um, those are direct, directly in the secret process. So I would be worried if that, that court date, I believe is in February, I, I don't remember if it was like the fifteenth?
Fifteen.
It's in a cou- thank you, it's in a couple of weeks. Um, it, depending on how that judge rules, that could, to me, I would be concerned that that could leave us liable for the, um, project to come back after us.
So according to Will and our conversations about the second lawsuit as well, and yourself, that was not a concern, can you speak to that?
Like I said, there's no, there's no injunction, they didn't file for an injunction, that would stop the process. So as far as we're concerned, this is moving forward, this is before us now.
Whether there's an injunction or not, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that if, if the court rules in the plaintiff's, is that right, in their favor? Um, I don't mean to point at the audience, but if the court rules against the, the town board, rules in favor of the people who filed the article seventy-eight, that leaves the secret process null and void and the project would have to go back after, would have to go back through it. And we're saying now that we're accepting stormwater maintenance and easement for the project, I would be worried that would leave us open for potential litigation.
If we thought there was, if we thought there was validity to the lawsuit? I mean- Right.
I would be worried about that.
Um, my, our opinion is that you can vote on this tonight.
Okay.
So what the board wants to do is-
Again, make a motion to approve this.
Okay, so you're making a motion to approve the au- authorize supervisor to sign the stormwater maintenance and easement agreement for project sailfish, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carried. All right, uh, F, acceptance of letter of credit for sale for stormwater controls in the amount of twelve million dollars. This is a letter of credit, again, that we request that allows us the flexibility to pull on this letter of credit if there are any issues specifically related to the stormwater controls. And am I missing anything else on this one in terms of the previous discussion?
And or defaults under the agreement.
Right.
It's a protection for the town.
Correct. Part of formality of the project.
I would again state that I'm concerned with that project and the two, the two article seventy-eight that are currently being pressed against the town board and the planning board. And say that at this time, we should hold these, hold this letter F until after the courts have made the decision.
Any other feedback? Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion is to, uh, accept letter of credit for sailfish stormwater controls in the amount of twelve million dollars, do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.